January fourteenth, here at five thirty, we'll open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jiroji. Past actions by local state and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And this evening, public comment will happen after the presentations, but just to let you know, pursuant to the Brown Act, section five four nine five four dash or dot three, the public shall be provided an opportunity to speak only on items that are listed on the special meeting agenda. Pursuant to City Council Resolution two thousand and eleven dash two two, City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. And with that, we will get on to business with City Manager Slattery.
Mayor, may we do a roll call, please?
We may.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Mayor Burgel?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche and Councilmember Fernandez absent.
Thank you. And so now we can get started with City Manager Slattery. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay, so this meeting here is related to two ordinances are sitting and lying on sidewalk ordinance as well as the camping ordinance. As I believe our council is aware, about five years ago, I think there was a court case that changed the way in which we could address camping issues and those type of things. It was the Boise case. When that Boise case happened, we came back to council and made it an amendment to our camping ordinance to be in compliance with that. Since then and more recently, the Boise case was overturned and it's changed. So at that time, the city attorney's office decided it would be a good time to review that case. While reviewing that case, it was very apparent to city attorney's office that the, not only the camping ordinance, but also the sit and lie ordinance are in need of a lot of revision. And they're very much similar in certain ways and felt as though that those two needed some revision based on past practices and what we're currently doing now. So that evolved into just not really addressing the camping ordinance itself, but also the sit and lie ordinance. As a part of that, we felt it would be a good time to provide an update on our homeless action plan, which is related to this and go over the milestones associated with that. So tonight, we are going to have, for the most part, two separate presentations, kind of three. First, it's going to be City Attorney Luna discussing those, what she found in her research and discuss what the possibilities are for those ordinances, as well as following that with some presentation by CSET about their experiences and then followed that up with Managing Mental Health Clinician Rosen to discuss different types of treatment. And then project, Special Project Manager, sorry, Davis, will be going over the homeless action plan and give an update on that. So I just request that staff is going to present all of this information. There will be no questions after each one. We'll save all the questions in public comment after all of the presentations are completed. So with that, City Attorney Luna will take over and go through her portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Miles.
Thank you, City Manager Slattery, and good evening, Mayor Burgel and Council. I'm going to pause here while my portion of the PowerPoint gets brought up. All right, so as, as City Manager Slattery mentioned, tonight is a discussion broadly about the future of the city of Eureka's camping, sitting, and lying ordinances after the recent decision by the Supreme Court in City of Grants Pass v. Johnson. So what are we talking about exactly? City Manager Slattery alluded to this a little bit, but there was a seminal case of Martin v. Boise back in, it was actually decided in two thousand and eighteen, and the final decision was certified in two thousand and nineteen. And subsequent to that, Johnson v. Grants Pass in two thousand and twenty-two, these are two cases at the Ninth Circuit level that decided that there were limits on the ability of local agencies to enforce their no camping ordinances. And we're going to talk more deeply about both of those in a couple of minutes. Subsequent to that, in two thousand and twenty-four, in June of last year, the Supreme Court heard an appeal of the Grants Pass case and overturned those limitations on a six-three decision. And again, we're going to talk about those in further detail in a couple of minutes. Our roadmap for tonight, I am going to present a couple of minutes on the legal framework. Essentially, why is the city of Eureka talking about a Supreme Court case? I will talk about the three relevant cases. There's lots more relevant case law here, so I don't want you to think there's only three cases, but for our purposes for tonight, we have time for just the three. There may be more to come depending on what council directs staff tonight. And then, again, a couple of slides on the two ordinances that Miles mentioned. One is our camping ordinance and one is our sitting and lying ordinance. And after that, I'm going to pass it off to Sergeant Ome to talk about CSET. He will pass it off to Managing Mental Health Clinician Rosen to talk about care. And finally, in our presentation tonight, will be Special Project Manager Davis talking about the homeless action plan. So the presentation tonight is in four parts. So first part, why are we talking about a Supreme Court case here at the city of Eureka? And broadly speaking, Martin and Grants Pass are cases that sound in constitutional law, specifically whether or not there was a violation of the Eighth Amendment when both Boise and Grants Pass implemented their no camping ordinances. The Ninth Circuit decided in both of those cases that indeed the Eighth Amendment was The ultimate arbiters of federal constitutional rights are the federal courts broadly, but of course, the Supreme Court wants cases make their way from, from the bottom, the U.S. District Courts, through the U.S. Courts of Appeal and up to the Supreme Court. So essentially, it's taken us, you know, many years to get to a point where we now have a decision on this issue from the Supreme Court, and that's what we'll be talking about tonight. I know that many of you know this, but I thought it was important to just talk a little bit about where we live in the Northern District of California at the district court level. That's our federal court. We then, of course, live in the Ninth Circuit, and there was a map of that back here. The Ninth Circuit is very big. It's one of thirteen circuits in that court system. So I'm just giving a little primer on, on that system. All of these cases lived in the federal court their whole lives. And where does Eureka's municipal code fit in? Well, at every level, we are, at every level of law, we're subject to the United States Constitution. So we live all the way down here at the city level, but again, state laws and statutes, state constitutions, we're all beholden to constitutional law, and that's what was decided at the Supreme Court in Grants Pass v. Johnson. So there's a, there's a massive system at play here, and we do fit in at this level. And I think there's a couple of takeaways from this slide that I want you to keep in mind. At the city level, our police is the enforcement agency, and the city attorney's office is the, is the only attorney that's going to prosecute the violation of the municipal code. So at the state level, you have attorneys general. At the federal level, you have attorneys general. At the county level and state level, you have district attorneys enforcing penal code against any criminals, but the city code is enforced by the city attorney and our local police department. So starting with the case, again, that City Manager Slattery mentioned, this case did come down in two thousand and eighteen. It's listed as a two thousand and nineteen case because there was a pretty important request for that case to be reheard en banc in two thousand and eighteen. That request was denied, and so the decision in that case was certified in two thousand and nineteen, but we knew about it in, in September of two thousand and eighteen when it was decided by the court. And broadly, this quote is directly from the case itself. I'm going to try not to read quotes, but I did want to put some up there for people to see what the reasoning of the court was and the, the type of language that was used in these cases. Again, broadly criminalizing the sleeping outdoors when people don't have anywhere else to go. The Ninth Circuit thought that that violated the Eighth Amendment rule against cruel and unusual punishment. The effect of that ruling was pretty profound here at the city of Eureka and across the Ninth Circuit, across all of those states that were in that first slide. This case had huge impacts, and you can see that in the city of Eureka, in two thousand and eighteen, we were issuing quite a few citations under the no camping ordinance. That's Eureka Municipal Code, section ninety-three point oh two. Four hundred and fifty-nine citations were issued in two thousand and eighteen, and two thousand and nineteen, zero. So we put a complete moratorium on the use of that ordinance immediately. By two thousand and twenty, notably, we hadn't changed our code yet. We didn't need to. We just needed to be able to interpret the case appropriately and see that, in fact, it wasn't a total moratorium on enforcement. It just said that you had to make sure that there was somewhere else for people to go if you were going to enforce your no camping ordinance. And so we went tentatively in two thousand and twenty, back to some enforcement of that existing ordinance, the old model. It was modified in two thousand and twenty-one, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Couple of years later, there was a second case in a very similar vein that decided not only was criminalization, that means the issuance of misdemeanor citations against the Eighth Amendment, but also the use of administrative citations. So the heavy use of fines in this case, that's what Grants Pass was doing. And the Ninth Circuit, again, different district case, but using Martin as a underpinning for that decision, they decided to expand the, the holding in Martin to also disallow the use of civil citations where there was nowhere else for people to sleep. How do you like my, my picture? So moving on, the city of Grants Pass v. Johnson, we're here in more current times. This case came down last year. It's been about six months since it was decided, and this was a sweeping rebuke to the Ninth Circuit's decision. And essentially, Neil Gorsuch, Justice Gorsuch, wrote the opinion of the court. It was a six-three decision, so it wasn't unanimous. There was a pretty scathing dissent that I have a slide on. But broadly, Gorsuch said federal judges shouldn't decide the nation's homeless policy. And that's what he thought the Ninth Circuit had done. He says that homeless policy should be decided at the local level. So again, I am not interpreting this case. I am using some quotes from this case here. I really recommend that anybody who has the time or the, the inclination, go and read this case. It's very, very interesting. There's a, a good majority opinion and a, a good minority opinion as well, so worthwhile to read. But for our purposes, this overturned the, the Boise and Grants Pass cases. And so here we are discussing, like so many others in the Ninth Circuit, what to do in the wake of that decision. I do think there's a couple of important points to make about Sonia Sotomayor's minority opinion in this case. It isn't binding, right? She didn't write the majority opinion. This isn't a binding opinion, but she does essentially lay out what she thinks local agencies could have done, instead saying that time, place, and manner protections, time, place, and manner regulations could still be in place with Martin's protections. And she also laid out a bit of a roadmap for people who might want to challenge any ordinances that come in the wake of this decision, saying that perhaps excessive fines and due process clause considerations had not been decided by the majority. So important to pay attention to these as well. Moving on, I've just got a couple more slides left, and then I'm going to pass it on. We've got a number of people speaking tonight, so I want to keep my portion short. Moving on to the couple of ordinances that we're talking about tonight. The current versions of those ordinances are found in our existing codified EMC under section one thirty point one two and ninety-three point oh two. But they have a long history here at the city, going back to nineteen, eighteen ninety-six. There was a no loitering code included in a bigger ordinance about morality and good order. In nineteen hundred, there were further regulations about collection and congregation of persons on the street. I would be a little nervous about constitutional issues here if that was still in place, but it is not. Nineteen oh three, further amendments preventing lying or sleeping in public places. This is the first time you see the word sleeping coming into it earlier. It had been no loitering, but now you see pretty quickly, right? From eighteen ninety-six to nineteen hundred to nineteen oh three, additional regulations coming into play to prevent sleeping in public places. There was a grand codification of our entire bunch of ordinances in nineteen sixty-three, and at that time, the name of this ordinance changed to disorderly conduct, but not much else changed at that time. There were updates and a simplification, actually, in nineteen eighty-two. And then the, the major overhaul that led to the current version of this was in two thousand and twelve, and I add this map here on the right-hand side because this ordinance has eighteen maps associated with it. The two thousand and twelve version of this, of this ordinance completely did away with the simplification of nineteen eighty-two and made it, I would say, you know, an overly long ordinance. I'll be kind and call it overly long, but you know, many, many maps appear here. Basically, this is still a no sitting or lying on sidewalks ordinance, but it breaks it out into many, many commercial districts. And I didn't actually know we had so many in the city until I was reviewing this ordinance and saw all of these maps, so. Sorry. And finally, the existing camping ordinance currently codified at ninety-three point oh two has roots a hundred years ago, so starting in nineteen twenty-four. And for the historians in the room, this picture is actually from nineteen fourteen. I apologize. It's as close as I could get with a picture that I still really liked. So in nineteen twenty-four, the original no camping ordinance said broadly, no camping without a permit. And at that time, you could come to the city and get a permit to camp. It seems, you know, just about anywhere the city wanted you to camp. Following that, there was a no habitation in movable structures ordinance in nineteen forty-eight. The codification in nineteen sixty-three combined those two into the camping auto trailers and house trailers ordinance. Ninety-four, ninety-five, there was an update, and importantly for us, there was a bifurcation again of the camping and auto trailers and house trailers ordinance. So auto trailers and house trailers got taken out and put somewhere else, and that existing ordinance is still in our code the same as it was back then. It hasn't been updated since. The camping ordinance has been updated. As City Manager Slattery mentioned, in two thousand and twenty-one, post Martin v. Boise, we did update our ordinance, although we did something at the time that was, you know, we did a lot of things with that ordinance. There, there were a lot of updates, and I think some of them were very good, but we did move to an infraction-only model. In other words, we removed the ability to issue misdemeanor citations and prosecute on a misdemeanor basis. So the only violation of the no camping ordinance right now is a monetary fine. And there are a couple of tiers of that monetary fine, but they're all relatively low. And so with that, of course, we're going to be having a lot of discussion later after all four of the presenters have, have gone. And so, you know, please keep in mind that these ordinances are what we're here to discuss, and we'll be taking your recommendations about where to go next. But right now, I am going to hand it off to Sergeant Ome for his portion of this presentation.
Thank you, City Attorney Luna. Welcome.
Bear with me a second till I figure this out.
Hold on.
Oh.
Yeah. That's what we do.
That is it.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me? How about now?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. Is that too loud? My name's John Ome. I've been working for the Eureka Police Department for about sixteen years now. I'm a sergeant, and I've been overseeing CSET for the last two years. The reason I was asked to come speak tonight is because among CSET's many responsibilities, we also are the primary team at Eureka PD that responds to complaints regarding encampments. What I can say, based off my experience, most individuals we contact at camps voluntarily comply. They'll pack up when we let them know about a complaint or whatever the problem is. However, there is a small percentage of individuals out there who refuse to comply. In those situations, unless there's some kind of immediate need for us to remove a camp, I will often give them time. We'll give multiple warnings and offers of resources before considering taking enforcement action. Eventually, however, there does come a point where we have to balance the needs of the community with the needs of the environment to the needs of the actual individual who's failing to comply. At this point, really, the only tool we have available is some form of enforcement action. Even with that, though, with the end goal being to actually help people overcome homelessness, which not only benefits them, but the rest of our community, we're almost always willing to continue working with an individual whom we've even arrested. There's been a number of instances where we've gone to great lengths to actually advocate for people who we arrested, even in court. Just one example of this, there used to be a male who was pretty well-known throughout Eureka PD, and probably even some people in this room may recognize him if they'd seen him on the street today. He was known for building fairly elaborate structures using pallets and any other kind of random building materials he could find. Naturally, this behavior caused a lot of citizens to make complaints, which resulted in lots of police contacts. A little bit about him, he was a veteran. He was battling not only addiction to methamphetamine, but also some pretty significant mental health issues as well, making problems even worse for him. He wasn't actually even from Eureka. He was just somehow ended up here in two thousand and fifteen. I can't remember exactly how. Just to kind of give an example of some of the things we were encountering with him, here's one of his camps that he built. This, uh, really doesn't do it a lot of justice, really, but I mean, because there's only a couple pictures, but hopefully it gives you a little bit of an idea of kind of the situation that we were encountering. And then the last picture here, I mean, you can barely see it, but there's some drug paraphernalia in there as well. As the years went by and the complaints kept coming in, eventually ended up getting arrested for a multitude of offenses ranging from just mere infractions to felonies. However, early on, we kind of noticed that enforcement, at least by itself, wasn't doing a whole lot to deter his behavior. Because almost immediately when he'd get released from jail, it just, the behavior would continue. When we started unraveling the cause for his behavior, it clearly came back to his addiction, his mental health, and also lack of available, at least specific support that he needed out here. So as he was going in and out of jail, ironically, the people, some of the people that were arresting him, CSET, managed to make a positive relationship with him, one where he actually trusted us enough to map out a plan to get him out of the situation. This primarily involved getting him home to support a family who we actually got in touch with, who confirmed that they actually wanted him back, and they wanted to help him get back on his feet. In order to do this, we had to work with the district attorney's office, as well as the public defender, to actually get charges dropped, under the condition that he actually followed through with his end of the deal and returned home to his waiting, supportive The combination of using the criminal justice system to hold this individual accountable while also building that positive relationship is really what it took, I think, to get this individual to get help. Without that, I don't think he ever would have accepted help. I mean, I, I knew him fairly well from my contacts with him. Today, nearly two years later, he's by all counts living a transformed life. He has his own house. He's holding down not one, but two jobs. He has his own car, and one of his proudest achievements that he's not afraid to talk about is he's still sober. The reason I know this is because he actually stays in contact with CSET, and he has a family that's just expressed immense gratitude for helping bring their son home. Of course, not every situation ends up like this. That's obviously why, or partly why, we're having this discussion tonight. There's also plenty of individuals out there who we're contacting who are refusing to comply. They're refusing to accept resources that we're offering them, and they're instead, in some ways, choosing to live in these camps where they can engage in criminal activity. Here's just a recent picture of one of the camps that we were dealing with to give you a little bit of an idea of what some of them look like. Again, it doesn't do a whole lot of justice without actually being there. As you can see, there's obviously As you can see, there's obviously quite a bit of damage to the environment and everything else. In addition to the significant environmental damage that's caused by these camps and the reduced quality of life for the rest of our community, there is also a lot of crime that's associated with them. I'm not saying every camp is, I mean, criminal, but there is a lot of crime that we're encountering. And a lot of these crimes are victimizing the rest of our community, such as thefts and assaults. Just a very recent example, as of last week, myself and Ranger Huffman went out to a camp, and we located nearly all of the property that was stolen from the Special Olympics team out here. And if any of you read the paper about that, it was in the paper recently. That was gonna be my recent event that I was gonna talk about, but I have one that's more recent. Literally today, just a few hours ago, we went back out to a camp, and we located thousands of dollars in stolen power tools, as well as a stolen generator that belonged to a local business. This issue's not also, or this issue's also affecting some of our city employees' ability to do their jobs, because they're instead having to pick up thousands of pounds of trash on a regular basis from the waterfront, from the parks, from the streets, from the sidewalks, wherever you can imagine, we're finding trash. I know this, and I can say that with confidence, speaking in front of you, because being the sergeant for CSET, I've collected the statistics for that specific thing for CSET. And I could say, last year alone, CSET was responsible for getting the removal of nearly one hundred thousand pounds of trash. It's a very small team, too, with how, I mean, short staff we were over these last few years, so. As the municipal code's written, as was already spoken about, it's a non-arrestable offense. Because of this, when we encounter situations where people are being non-compliant, or when we're trying to address the individuals who are repeatedly causing us to do these large-scale cleanups, we have to find other laws that might be getting violated in order to fix the problem. Because of this, a lot of those cases, they actually go to the District Attorney's Office rather than the city attorney. And although we have a great working relationship with the district attorney, and we can advocate on people's behalf, depending on what kind of case we send over, it can limit our ability at times. That's pretty much all I have to say right now. I'm gonna pass it off to Jacob Rosen, as well as Jeff Davis. And I'll elaborate further on how enforcement actually fits into the bigger picture, how that aligns with our goals. And I'll be remaining here to answer any questions, as well as obviously the chief of police and the commanders. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Ome.
Oh, couple more pictures. Sorry, this is the Special Olympics property here, just to...
Thank you for finding that.
It's Ranger Huffman, working hard. Thank you.
And we just wanted to acknowledge that Councilmember Fernandez has joined us in council chambers.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, one of the options ahead of councils, or one of the options in councils' futures in terms of looking at how to revise this, if it needs revising, is whether or not, as Sergeant Ome was indicating, that infraction is increased to a misdemeanor. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about is some of the pieces that we would look at coupling with that if that were an option that council decides to move forward with. And so, I wanted to talk to you tonight about what's in the toolbox, kind of how do we approach treatment? How do we approach combining support with enforcement and accountability? And cover some of that here. So, for what we'll cover as my part tonight, we'll kind of do a quick thought exercise and do a little bit of engagement. Should be a nice little break in between the presentations here. We'll talk about some statistics, we'll look at general approaches to treatment, and then we'll talk about some options for expanding the local toolbox in terms of promoting accountability and compassion at the same time. So, to start in kind of a thought exercise, one of the things I wanted to kind of pose to council is, why do we seek relief from pain or discomfort? What tells us to seek that relief?
That's a rhetorical question, correct?
No, by all means, answer. It is a workshop.
No one likes to hurt, that's my... Any other takes? Come on, you guys, anyone?
I think seeking equilibrium in general?
Absolutely, right? And when we have discomfort, our brain, our mind, tells us that we should fix that. If we touch a hot stove, the brain has automatic reactions in our physiology to detect that's hot, that's going to burn us, and then we pull away from it, right? Similar with emotional pain. We do our best to work on that. And so, then the follow-up, though, is what if the organ that's in charge of reacting to that pain and discomfort is sick and can't perceive that pain and discomfort? And that one is more rhetorical, because I'll kind of jump into what that looks like, right? So, when the mind is not able to perceive that discomfort or perceive that pain or perceive the situation, that can come in a couple different forms. One of the major ones that the mental health field is really struggling with right now is a symptom called anosognosia. This is a symptom. It's a symptom that accompanies many mental health disorders, but primarily schizophrenia and bipolar-type disorders. And it's a symptom where the brain can't recognize one or more of their health conditions or their situation, and you can't get insight into that. So, if I stick my foot in my mouth right now while I'm presenting, I can wrap up the presentation and go home and kind of think back on what I did and how I said it, and revise that. Someone who's experiencing anosognosia is not able to do that self-reflection. Because of their illness, the organ that's responsible for that perception of situation, perception of discomfort, perception of pain, is not able to self-reflect on the action that may have led to that. And so, that can make it really difficult to buy into treatment, and it has a number of other implications that we'll get into. One of the other primary reasons that this sort of thing can happen is a result of substance use disorders. Substance use disorders skew the development of insight based on the brain's physiological dependency on the chemical of choice. And it does that by gradually shifting perspective of adverse circumstances or events as acceptable so long as they're getting that substance of choice. And so, it's a gradual and slow adjustment from recognizing what maybe would not have been okay before they started using a substance. But so long as they're then obtaining that substance, the brain starts to shift its perception of uncomfortable stimuli or things that it doesn't find acceptable. And as a result, that person often can lose insight into how their situation is affecting them or how their situation is affecting others. And so, it can really be quite impairing, and again, have a number of implications. Regardless of whether it's anosognosia or whether it's secondary to addiction, independent development of insight, right? That person's ability to recognize what's happening to them in that situation is impaired. And that has really profound implications for their health and how they buy into treatment. So, if we look at some statistics, causes of homelessness include poverty, unemployment, lack of affordable housing, mental health disorders, and substance use disorders. These are very broad categories, but when you start to really boil things down, it falls back to one of these. Probably the one that I didn't find exactly outlined in the research would probably be trauma. I would imagine that there's other studies that, other than what I was looking at, that indicate that as a cause, because intergenerational trauma can lead to some of these other things here. But these are the broad categories that we're working with. And what does that look like locally? We have forty-eight percent of the individuals who are homeless in Eureka self-reporting that they have a mental health disorder that's diagnosed. We know with self-report, that's likely under-reported. We have fifty-nine percent self-reporting a substance use disorder. Right, so about sixty percent of folks voluntarily having the capacity to recognize that there's probably some issues with that. But again, we know that that's probably under-reported, just because self-report of these things often is, because of stigma. Sixty-five percent of care clients are homeless. Twenty percent identify lack of employment as a cause of homelessness. Twenty-five percent identify lack of affordable housing or loss of housing as a cause of homelessness. Twenty-two percent report no income, right? So, coming back to the poverty component, over a fifth of individuals don't have any income at all, social security or GR or anything. Thirty-five percent of care clients have the symptom of anosognosia. So, one-third of our clients are going to be treatment-resistant to some degree because they don't recognize they're sick. So, how does this relate to a camping ordinance? Some types of treatment in the mental health field are contingent on enforcement and coercion. And I know coercion is not a sexy word to attach to treatment, but when we think about it as there needs to be sufficient motivation in order for a person to want to change and buy into that change, that's what the coercion is getting at. So, we're not blackmailing anyone, but we're looking at trying to support them and building motivation to actually make changes. And so, what does that look like? It'll look like law enforcement, plus, say, our team care, having successful treatment. And the way that we collaborate and combine those can often have a situation where that support and treatment is offered simultaneously with the accountability and enforcement efforts. So, when someone is having inappropriate behavior, we can couple that with offering support at the same time that that behavior is being held accountable. And so, by increasing the infraction to a misdemeanor, that would give us another opportunity to provide that support and add that tool to the toolbox at the time that that accountability measure is being put in place. And I'll talk a little bit about what that will look like in just a minute here. First, though, I do want to cover just some general treatment approaches. Don't worry, this isn't gonna be exhaustive. When we look at substance use disorders, these are some of the varieties of treatment. If we break it down, we have voluntary treatments, and we have involuntary treatments. And then somewhere in the middle, we have coerced treatments, where we're building motivation and measuring accountability with that compassion. In California, we'll talk about SB forty-three in just a second. We don't have a ton of involuntary treatments for substance use disorders active right now, but in other states such as Florida, their fifty-one-fifty code or their equivalent of fifty-one-fifty code actually does work with substance use disorders, and they can mandate individuals into substance use treatment. Or if they don't comply, then into jail, which is not the ideal outcome. With mental health, we have voluntary treatment, very much the same. We have some coerced treatments, such as Care Court, which is rolling out now. We have involuntary treatments, that's the fifty-one-fifty process, LPS conservatorships, state hospitals. And then on the social services approach, while some folks may be coerced or required to go and access some of these services, oftentimes, it's still voluntary. They still have to choose to fill out the forms. They have a choice before them. It's not a, that individual shall complete their application for social security. And usually, if it gets to that point, it's because they've been conserved under a mental health order, and it's the public guardian filling it out on their behalf. And so, we really don't see any coerced or involuntary resources there. So, in California, what's in green is kind of what's in place. So, these are different services that, in one form or another, are accessible either in Humboldt or somewhere throughout the state. We have systems in place that can cover these things. And then what we have in red are things that we don't really have, at least here in Eureka or in Humboldt. For substance use disorders, again, those locked treatments aren't in place yet. SB forty-three covers some of that, and we'll talk about that in a second. And we don't have a ton of pre-booking diversion programs in place. And we'll talk about the difference between diversion and a pre-booking diversion program in just a minute. So, involuntary substance use treatment, it does help some people. It is safe, they are safe while they're detained in that facility. With the implementation of SB forty-three, California law has already established a framework for this. The issue is, we don't have any of the facilities set up yet. So, found a possibly, oh, going back with the research in involuntary substance use treatment, one of the major drawbacks is that truly involuntary treatment, right? Where someone is detained in some sort of custody and placed into treatment, is for folks who are not ready to get treatment, not interested in it, when they come and use, once they leave, they do find that because tolerance has dipped, there is an increase in opiate overdoses. And so, that, while this can help some people, there are risks to this sort of implementation. It does require locked substance use treatment facilities, which is both expensive, and you need a licensing system for it. We have not established that in California yet. There isn't a licensing body, there isn't even a licensing type or what that would look like at this point. It's also very expensive. When you think about what it takes to run an inpatient psychiatric hospital, it would be somewhere in that ballpark to then also have an inpatient substance use facility that's locked. The billing's unclear. Medi-Cal does not currently provide for this. For example, if someone is admitted to Semper Virens, it cannot be a primary diagnosis of a substance use disorder. It has to be a mental health primary, otherwise billing does not occur. So, SB forty-three, again, this did add substance use disorders to the LPS laws, so now under gravely disabled, someone can have a substance use disorder. Just a reminder, SB forty-three has been postponed in most counties in California, including Humboldt, until January first of two thousand and twenty-six. So, this is not active yet. And there are no current facilities in Humboldt that are capable of accepting these clients. So, unless something is developed, or unless some of the other codes are changed around Medi-Cal billing and that sort of thing, even once the first rolls around next year, we wouldn't necessarily have somewhere to send people locally out of the ER, once they're there. Prop thirty-six, which just passed, this is more along the lines of coerced treatment as opposed to involuntary, and kind of with the diversion component. Increased penalties for drug-related and theft-related crimes. The third misdemeanor essentially can be upgraded to a felony. And that new class of felony was created, which is a treatment-mandated felony. And so, what this essentially does is instead of, it gives people the option that instead of doing up to three years in jail or prison for that felony, that individual can choose to then go and seek mental health treatment or substance use treatment in waiving that felony consequence. This wouldn't necessarily be a pre-booking diversion, because this person has been booked, they're going through the court system, this is something that would have to play out and would be pretty extensive, but it is a form of diversion. It's unclear what's going to qualify as sufficient treatment. So, I haven't seen any guidance yet as to, is this just one round in rehab? Is this going and seeing an outpatient doctor? It's unknown. And there's the possibility that this may overburden existing resources, just because a number of people may qualify for this, and depending on how often it's used, it could really bog things down. So, pre-booking diversion, and this is where we're getting a little closer to how this relates to the camping component. One of the leading models for this is law enforcement-assisted diversion. And the national model's still being researched, but we did have some promising outcomes when they piloted it in San Francisco and LA. So, pre-booking diversion is when someone is contacted by law enforcement for inappropriate behavior, usually lower level. And at that point, law enforcement themselves are able to offer, you know, we're going to make a report. However, we also want to just direct you to resources. And so, if you can, if you choose to go to resources, we can go that route instead of following through with the court system. And what we do is we end up saving that individual from having to go through the court system, and we can get them what they need. We also can then save a lot of time and energy on the court system by not routing them that way in the first place. We can divert the individual toward critical resources at the time of law enforcement contact, instead of that person having to wait until they cycle through a courtroom, which may be, depending on the crime that was committed, it could be weeks or months later. And oftentimes, there's broader resources available when these programs are implemented, because there's wide partnerships across cities or counties as opposed to very narrow diversion-specific resources, which are often outlined in diversion programs, which are mandated by courtrooms. This can include social services, mental health, substance use treatment. This approach balances accountability with compassion, offers support at that time of accountability, right? So, instead of, it avoids the courtroom altogether. Instead of accountability just being punishment, it actually creates a situation where accountability can also lead to a solution and compassion all at the same time, which being able to deliver that together as a package, especially for our folks who are struggling with mental health issues or substance use issues, who may not recognize their situation and their presentation, can be super, super important. This does have better outcomes than regular diversion programs, as well as involuntary substance use treatment. Some of the research that I was looking at... Some of the research that I was looking at had misdemeanor and felony reductions two to sixfold over a six to twelve month period. So, you know, we're looking at like a two hundred to six hundred percent reduction in recidivism of. Crimes that would qualify for a misdemeanor or felony. It maintains the individual's agency. And yields more connections to services. It also promotes community policing. And then it also promotes inter-agency collaboration by developing a larger network to provide that law enforcement assisted diversion. The city of Eureka. Started to launch a program like this in twenty twenty. Which. As you can imagine, between some difficulties with not having a ton of teeth to it, combined with this thing called COVID. Which was just nightmarish conditions to not launch any new programming, it didn't take off. And so we do have something like this on the books. It is not to the same fidelity as the national model, because we need to make some tweaks for being a small town. The full version that was originally developed in Seattle and that has been piloted by LA and San Francisco is pretty regimented in how it is rolled out. And it's more resource intensive as a result. However, we do have a version of this here locally that we are interested in re-implementing. Particularly if the option that council chooses is to move forward with escalating the infraction to a misdemeanor. Because that would add the teeth that are needed to gain some of that motivation to help folks. This sort of programming really plays to Eureka Police Department's strengths in community policing. CSAT is already doing a tremendous amount of work in this direction. And giving them an extra tool through developing the lead program locally would really enhance their ability to both collaborate with CARE but also uplift. And get folks connected when they have that anosognosia or their substance use disorder is preventing them from developing insight into their situation. And it'll really add that, that tool that we need to be able to work with individuals who are treatment resistant, who are not otherwise engaging. It'll help leverage relationship building, because we can work with these folks and provide support at the same time of holding accountability for inappropriate behavior. And essentially the way that it reads in the current ordinance is that low-level offenses. Still have reports taken and charges are still filed. But the city attorney holds or suspends that case until the individuals had an opportunity to work with uplift or CARE, which we will add to that. And work on developing a plan and what are going to be some goals that that individual can work towards and supporting themselves and changing their situation and bettering their situation. In favor of then being able to eventually drop that, that charge. So again, it cares not in there because CARE was not around in twenty twenty, but we would add that component. Once the goals are completed, the paperwork is then forwarded to the city attorney and EPD, closing that case out. If the individual does not participate in the program, the idea would then be, once the time elapses, that those charges are pushed forward for that accountability component. Revising the camping ordinance combined with LEAD. Gives EPD a new tool to simultaneously, again, hold those individuals accountable while offering support. In a manner that promotes that individual's agency to make that choice on whether they want to go the accountability route or whether they want to actually change their circumstances. And it does so without having to go through the court system, be incarcerated, go in front of a judge, that sort of thing. The implementation date is to be determined. This is partially because we would need to add CARE to the ordinance, but then also. It really is going to depend on whether or not, kind of how this camping ordinance moves forward. If there aren't sufficient teeth, these sorts of things can be difficult to implement, because there isn't sufficient motivation for folks to buy into it. So again, revising that ordinance would give more tools to be able to bridge accountability with support. The general approach to working with our homeless population does not change, right? This would be a tool that's specifically targeted for individuals who are treatment resistant, either related to that anosognosia or their addiction. And would. Be something that is kind of used as a last resort that's further down the line, so that when someone who we've tried to work with, things have been offered, the voluntary route is not working. Then we have an extra tool that can be utilized in that situation to help get that person's support and add more motivation to it. And so by changing that ordinance and then combining that with the lead program, we get that tool. This is important since the treatment resistance is often related to the illness itself. And what we see right now is the result is a kind of vicious cycle where someone can have numerous law enforcement contacts. And receive numerous infractions. But nothing changes, because the infractions don't have the teeth that are needed to really be able to then motivate that person sufficiently to buy into mental health treatment. So by coupling LEAD with the changes to. Escalating the infraction to a misdemeanor, this would hopefully enable us to be able to target those folks and break that cycle. So in conclusion, upgrading the camping violations from that, that should say infraction, not citation, from the infraction to the misdemeanor. Would create an accountability mechanism. When coupled with the LEAD program, this would give us that extra tool to be able to work with these folks and hopefully break that cycle. And again, this doesn't change our current approach. We know our current approach is working for most people, but when we look at, you know, CARE's data and there's a third of the population that has anosognosia. We need some tools that move into the involuntary realm, because unfortunately with mental health. Due to the brain being the organ that develops insight, when it gets sick, we lose that ability and sometimes we need involuntary treatments or coerced treatments. And with that, I will allow special project manager Jeff Davis to come up and present on the homeless action plan.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight I'm going to provide an update on the homeless action plan that was adopted back in November of two thousand and twenty-two. Overall, there were eight main goals and a lot of sub-goals, and I'm going to try to do a concise overview of what we've accomplished and what we're still working towards. I think one of the biggest things that the city has done is really worked with our private developers to create permanent affordable housing. This is, last year, the city of Eureka achieved its pro-housing designation from the state, which really opened up the doors for more funding opportunities. You know, this year alone, we're breaking ground on, I think, three of the link housing projects here in Eureka. And there's several others that are in various stages, including Sunset Heights. And like I said, several others. Currently, the city of Eureka is working with a community partner to apply for a Home Key Plus grant to provide permanent supportive housing here in the city of Eureka. And also, I guess, an update for the last goal here, the. Creating a facility that would be a transitional housing unit out here on the waterfront trail. This was a. Project that was in part funded by the encampment resolution funding program. And it is serving a target population of folks that are living in encampments along the waterfront trails, specifically from Del Norte Street South. These photos were taken yesterday. It's been a project that's, has been in the works for quite some time. And we are getting very close to being able to open the doors and have folks move in. We're hoping next month, folks will start moving into this. This site. Thirty-three units, thirty-eight beds and up to forty people would be residing here in this temporary, this transitional housing project. Some of the units, all of the units have their own heaters, lights, electrical outlets, some have their own restrooms, ADA compliant. There's three different sizes of units. These are some of the smaller duplexes. Two dining facilities will be on site. And several restrooms will be scattered throughout the site. Each of these restrooms has its own shower, sink and toilet. And there's also a laundry facility on site. So this is a project that had started years and years ago and it's kind of changed over, over that time, and we are very close to seeing this, this come to fruition. Second goal. So one of the components was completing a annual homeless survey here through, I guess, with a joint collaboration effort between CSAT, Uplift and CARE. We do these every other year, and in the years we are not over, you know, doing these homeless surveys here for Eureka, we are taking part in the point in time count, so every single year. City staff is out gathering information and conducting surveys. And we, you know, review this, this data and really adjust how we approach our service delivery, our outreach and many of our other programs. Operating the CARE, the Crisis Alternative Response Team, that has been in effect for almost two years now, a year and a half. And opening the Humboldt, the Uplift Eureka Resource Center, it is happening. So this week we are doing open houses. It's located at eleven eleven E Street. It's the E Street side of the municipal auditorium. There's a brand new mural on the side. This is the main entrance. And so we did one, first day was today, tomorrow will be for community partners, and then anyone and everyone is welcome to stop by Thursday and Friday between eleven and one. To come in and see the space, see the services and the resources that we're going to be offering. And then starting the twenty-first, it'll be open Monday through Friday from ten to two. This is kind of a soft opening period. We're going to be making some adjustments and there will be a kind of a grand opening with more extended hours. Hopefully coming in February. Goal three. So yeah, we've been pretty active with presenting to council and also to several community organizations. And if, you know, and we're willing to go and meet up with anybody and present to any organization. Not just here locally, we've gone around the state and gone to conferences and presented. And really what we're doing here in Eureka is really far ahead of the curve and we're continuing to expand and enhance what we're doing. There's, you know, larger cities that have worked harder and longer, I'm sorry, not harder, but longer on this. And really we are much, much, much ahead of where most cities are. In a city providing social services, in a city doing these sort of outreach efforts and proactive policing, we really are one of the frontrunners and really leading by example. We're working very closely with a lot of local media partners, the city's new communication divisions, we're working closely with them to kind of get out the word of all the things that we're doing. And implementing innovative programming. So some of the, three of the big ones that we're doing right now are the Old Town Stewarts. It's a volunteer program here in Eureka. It's been up and running for several months now and it's just been a great success. They're going to be all over Old Town. We did quite a bit on that. I could do a whole presentation just on the Stewarts. We also are operating our co-pilot program. It's community volunteers get teamed up with. Folks looking for help and it's kind of a one-on-one helping hand where folks can volunteer and help one person for about an hour a week, and it really does have a huge impact on folks' lives. And then our Community Resource Center, which is, you know, please stop by this week and then we'll be opening next week. We're continuing to expand our rapid rehousing program. We've, like I said earlier, with the new achievement of being a pro-housing designation city that opened up for more funding, and so that funding is going to allow us to continue. Operating our rapid rehousing program and also kind of expanding some of the other services, housing services that we offer. And, you know, every day we're recruiting and working to better our relationships with our current landlords and property management companies. And also making sure that our clients, our, the folks that we get into housing remain housed and receive supportive services. One of the goals was to implement a homelessness prevention program. This is something that we had never done before. And so I'm proud to say that we did. Back in November, we launched kind of a pilot program, homelessness prevention. Sixteen households were assisted. Almost half of those households had one or more children involved. It was a county-wide program, it was a little bit of a breakdown of the different cities. And. Every single household was, was connected with, with services and resources and community partners in one, in one fashion or another. And today, every single one hundred percent of the participants in that prevention program are housed. And, you know, when we throw out numbers, you know, we've housed over, over two hundred people in our rapid rehousing program. We've helped sixteen households so far. It's our, I'm sorry, seventeen households in our prevention program. And numbers, you know, say a lot, but each one of those numbers is a unique story, unique situation. One of those seventeen households was someone that was really in bad shape. They were, you know, facing an eviction court date. They had previously been chronically homeless. That's a huge indicator whether or not you are going to be homeless again, as if you were in the past. And they were really kind of at a point where they didn't know where to go and they were preparing to go out and, you know, face homelessness. We were able to step in. Prevent that from occurring, provide supportive services, stabilization services. And that person today is housed, has a full-time job and that prevented, you know, this, this household with a child from experiencing homelessness. So, you know, in addition to helping folks that are already experiencing homelessness, the city is really doing its best to secure funding to prevent that from occurring in the first place. And, you know, we learned a lot of lessons through this prevention program and it's also been a great outreach tool for landlords and potential landlords, you know, potential landlords and potential. Partners with our rapid rehousing program. Right now, we've exhausted the funding for that pilot program, but and we are prepared to, hopefully in the next couple of months, to re-implement that program with more funding. And collaborating with other organizations and providing services. This is something, you know, we attend all of the COC meetings, the coordinated entry meetings. We have multiple staff at each one of these, really making sure that we are working as closely as possible with, with the county and all of our other community partners. And really, it's an ongoing effort to strengthen the existing partnerships and form new ones. This resource center has been. It's been huge for going out and, and like I said, reinforcing those existing partnerships and then forging new ones. It's been. This resource center is, has, you know, hasn't officially been open, but it's really gone a long way so far. Goal number seven, this is kind of an ongoing goal, and we are conducting targeted outreach. We're in the process of expanding, almost doubling our outreach team here with the city of Eureka. Within Uplift, you know, our CARE colleagues and our CSAT colleagues also conduct outreach. And. Yeah, the CARE team is up and running. And yeah, I think once, once we can open up that transitional housing unit out on the Crowley property, I think that's going to open up. You know, provide some housing options for some folks that are living in these encampments. And really open up the door for some hazardous waste and trash removal and really going in and addressing that environmental degradation. And utilizing. Yeah, the data, the data that we collect from our annual, our biannual surveys. That also with our, our point in time count data. And then also just, you know, our case notes, our interactions with, with our outreach workers and the folks that are out there on the frontline. We're just constantly, you know, taking into consideration new data and adjusting our approach and. And. Ensuring that we're effectively and efficiently conducting our outreach services. And then, yeah, CARE has implemented its electronic health records system. And they've done so much that they've outgrown that initial system and they're getting ready to implement a new system, so they are just doing some, some amazing things that the CARE team. So that was a really brief overview of our homeless action plan, some of the strives that we've made in the last two years. And I just wanted to mention, take this opportunity to mention a few other things outside of the homeless action plan, things that we've been doing. The city has increased its emergency shelter capacity. There's been some remodels over at the rescue mission that's increased that capacity. There's been a new women's and children's shelter that has opened up. And there's also been contracts for an overflow shelter here, so if, if the rescue mission was to ever be at capacity, there's a mechanism in place where we can add on additional twenty-five beds. For folks that are seeking shelter, emergency shelter. And then we currently have a project underway to create additional shelter beds to repurpose forty. Shelter beds here in the city of Eureka. You know, we've, we've just really, CSAT and Uplift were, you know, created around the same time. We've always worked really, really closely together. And with the implementation of CARE, these three programs are in different departments and they work really closely together and really complement each other really, really well. One example of that is the extreme weather overnight warming centers that we're able to operate, these three programs plus. A couple of community partners and hundreds of. These three programs plus a couple of community partners and hundreds of volunteers are able to step up. We've already activated a few times this year. And when weather is extreme, we're able to provide warming centers for, for folks to, to, you know, escape the, the elements and, and stay warm. And one thing that we, we did implement, it was before that update, but I, I just wanted to speak on the, the lead, the diversion program that we did implement back in 2020 during COVID. It was before CARE was implemented. And, and there was success. There was a lot of success with folks who voluntarily, you know, signed up for, for the lead program and that showed up to meetings. We had a, a great diversion coordinator on our uplift team that helped folks achieve milestones and, and really worked towards goals. And, and a lot of the folks, once they, you know, satisfied the requirements of the diversion program, stayed on and, and received additional resource, you know, additional services and resources. And, and a lot of them, you know, moved on and, and accomplished additional milestones outside of the diversion program. But I think one of the reasons it, it isn't still in existence today is because there are some folks that are very service resistant and there really wasn't any, any teeth to this. If someone didn't show up, if signed up for the diversion program and decided not to, to show up or not to contact or not to, to follow through on their end, there was really nothing that we, no tool that we had to, to enforce that. And so I, now, you know, four years later, with the, the implementation of this CARE team, if we were able to have the tools in our tool belt and the toolbox to, to go out, re-implement this diversion program and do it, do it the right way with, with those teeth in place and also with this mental health component. I, I, you know, I, I saw that the successes that happened before and I, I could only imagine that the level of success that we would have with a fully, you know, with, with all the, all the tools at our disposal. And our staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions at this time? I would like to keep in mind if we could keep questions brief in the beginning, just so that the whole public can speak and then we can revisit things. We can revisit after, yeah. So we're going to ask questions now, just a few, but we're going to come back to it. Anybody? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. I mean, I, I hope this saves time for the public versus burning the public. Um, just a few questions about the lead program. Let's see, how many people participated in 2020? What kinds of partnerships could be enacted or built upon? You know, I was moving forward with it, if, you know, if that's what happens. And what does it mean to close the case? Would it be on their record or what would be the, the kind of, you know, like if they followed through and the case was closed, what would that look like in terms of their future opportunities?
And I, I do apologize, I don't have those, those specific numbers from, from our, our 2020 pilot program. I would say there was at least, I think, three dozen probably folks that, that signed up for the, the lead program. And really it was, it was really self-guided and whatever their, their goals, whatever they wanted to achieve, we kind of let them, we, you know, we were just in a position to steer them towards services and, and resources. So some folks got signed up for health insurance, some folks got signed up for social security, some folks, you know, got signed up for, for documents, other folks, you know, a lot of it was just, you know, service related and just working with folks moving forward. I would say maybe a, maybe a third of the folks really utilized the program. I think maybe another third started and then kind of, you know, fizzled out or just didn't show up after the, the initial meeting. And then another third, we, we just never heard from, you know, after they, they agreed to, to sign up for the program.
To, I have difficulties tackling the third question just because I, I'm not as familiar with the legal component. But what I can say is, as far as resource connections go, in looking at the Seattle model and the LA and San Francisco models, they really had broad reaching connections. They actually developed like monthly meetings with community partners. And it really does range everything from all levels of substance use treatment to all levels of mental health treatment, social service connection. So whether that's getting folks SSI, getting them on a housing list, getting them into housing, working towards going to mental health treatment, maybe that looks like getting connected with med support and then getting back on medications. That might be just getting connected to counseling. And then on the substance use side, it may, that could include, you know, going to A meetings or going to getting connected with the county's dual recovery program or going to detox or going to rehab. And those would be things that we could assist in connecting people to here. You know, looking at whether we're, and this is why, you know, we have an implementation version of this, but it's not to the fidelity of the, the national model. You know, whether we're going to have a monthly meeting with every community partner, that may be more than what our, our staff are capable of bringing on right now. But we already have connections with all these folks. And even though we're not having a monthly meeting, we work with them regularly and would be able to assist in connecting individuals who participated in the program to those services.
And just briefly, the, the simple filing of a complaint against somebody doesn't create a, a record per se, if there's no conviction, then there's not going to be a record of a conviction. And I, I also will say, you know, if we do move forward with implementation of this, you know, this model, whether or not charges are even filed in the beginning, you know, is still up to discussion. So, yeah, your, your question is, is well taken, right? Are people going to avoid the, you know, the, the negative aspects of the criminal justice system and still be able to participate in this program? And obviously the answer is we certainly hope so and we think so. And I, I also will just mention that on, on Zoom with us is the public defender, Luke Brownfield. So if at any time he has additional things to say about that side of it, his experience in the criminal justice world is greater than mine. So I will defer to him if, if I say anything out of order.
Did you have a follow-up or?
Maybe, but I'll let other councilmembers go first.
Okay. Councilmember Fernandez, then Moulton.
Thank you, Mayor. So Senate Bill 43 references expanding involuntary treatment, correct?
Correct. Specifically the grave disability criteria under the 5150 law, which also dictates LPS conservatorships, which is the most restrictive version of conservatorship in the state.
And then I just want to make sure, because I, I'm not sure if I misheard, but you said that something had been delayed until January of '26?
SB 43 itself.
So it was SB 43 itself, so?
January 1 of 2026.
Okay. And how does CARE Court fit into all of this then too?
So CARE Court fits into it. CARE Court would be a court diversion system. So instead of a pre-booking diversion system, such as what we've established with, or what, what could be established with lead and what other cities have established with lead. CARE Court is more a mandatory treatment where someone is referred through the courts, either because they have accrued law enforcement attention and have charges pending and as a result they're being referred for CARE Court or some sort of diversion. Or whether it's petitioned by family or community partners because someone has routinely been unable to care for themselves and maybe they aren't quite meeting hospitalization criteria, but due to that non-compliance with treatment, again, because of things like anosognosia or addiction, they're, they're kind of wallowing and, and not able to get these, the support that they need. And then that often taxes the emergency systems of care heavily, right? With numerous ER visits and numerous EMS calls and numerous police calls.
Okay. And, and then going back for a moment then to SB 43, how would that interact with lead or does it interact with lead in any way?
I don't think SB 43 would really interact with lead. The, the beauty of, of lead is the, the pre-booking component of it, right? So being able to avoid a lot of the, the court system in the first place. Getting people at that, that point of connection at the time of accountability as opposed to waiting. CARE Court, we're actually working on a referral right now. It, it's, we've been working on it for days. It's, it's required a lot of time to compile the CARE Court referral. When someone's getting referred through the courts for diversion, it often requires multiple points of contact with the court system as well as contacts with the public defender and the district attorney. And then everyone has to agree on it and then they have to get referred to the diversion system. It can take more time to activate that, that treatment and support. Whereas with the pre-booking version of, the pre-booking version of diversion, someone can have that accountability interaction, like, hey, your behavior's inappropriate and in turn of, you know, not having the charges pressed altogether or charges, but we're going to hold off on filing them. Work with Uplift or work with CARE and get these supports. We can do that all without all the extra components.
And then my, my last piece for the moment is the warming centers to, to my knowledge, I believe, have been successful largely because there's lower barriers there. If you have a pet, if you have additional stuff, you can go there with your partner. That's not the case with some of the other shelters that we have. And so is there anything comparable to that moving forward?
In terms of the?
A lower barrier for folks who are either with a significant other, have a pet, have accumulated things with them?
In terms of the camping ordinance?
Yes.
Or, so i- in terms of other shelters that are opening up, we, we do have some accommodations for some of the, I think, do, maybe Jeff would be better at actually handling that with our new program.
And actually, City Manager Slattery wanted to weigh in as well, so maybe we'll let him weigh in first and then Jeff is that? Thank you. City Manager Slattery? You're muted. There you are. Hi.
I'll figure it out. I apologize. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Mayor and Council. Yes, the, the stuff that's being established now is housing first. The place on the Crowley property that is being opened up, hopefully by the end of the month, but sometime in the near future will be housing first. Dogs and kennels, don't know for sure, but the 40 units that we were talking about, that special for Project Manager Davis, the intent is to have those for dog kennels as well. Currently there are, especially in inclement weather, our current shelters during extreme weather do make exceptions to those barriers. Now, it's not all of the time, but I do know that the majority of the future spaces that are going to be made available will be housing first and will have less barriers as far as couples and dogs are concerned. Now, there's always going to be a barrier for people that are danger, either to themselves or to other individuals. And there'll always be barriers for things that are illegal. We, you know, obviously cannot, an agency who's operating a shelter cannot allow illegal activities to happen in that shelter. And then I also wanted to make one other clarification that was related to a previous question. Our lead program that was implemented back in 2020 is not done by ordinance. Our lead program, in as it stands now, we could add CARE to it without any sort of process and we could start implementing it. I agree with Managing Mental Health Commissioner Rosen that, you know, improving that lead program and making it more comprehensive is a good idea, but we could tomorrow implement that lead program.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add?
Yeah, just at the, the transitional housing project on the Crowley, partners are welcome, pets are welcome. And the, the shelter program that we are working with right now with a community partner is going to be a ultra, ultra-low barrier. So yeah, pets would be welcome, property, partners, those barriers would, would not exist for this program and this should be a 40-bed project when, when completed.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, everyone, for such thorough presentations. It's lovely to see all the sort of breadth of things that are going on. One question, just because I'm curious, how do you find housed folks who are at risk of losing housing? Is that, do they come to you for support, somebody?
Yeah, we worked with a few different community partners. We, we advertised it, it was on our website and we posted at community centers. And yeah, it was, I can think word of mouth, really. I think once folks saw that, they went on so many different, you know, different social medias and different, yeah, it was, it was a slow start, but then the phones wouldn't stop ringing. And yeah, it was, yeah, advertised and then also I think word of mouth went, went a real long way.
I could see that. The bigger question I have is about the teeth. So we currently have our ordinance provide, or the, the punishment for, is an infraction, right? So maybe this is a question for you, City Attorney Luna. Can you describe, please, the difference between what someone experiencing homelessness might face with the infraction versus if it gets bumped up to a misdemeanor?
Yeah, and at its most basic, infractions are monetary penalties only and misdemeanors carry the possibility of jail time. So what we're talking about here is the fact that along with the possibility of jail time, also there's the possibility of other programs that we could and intend to put in place with that. So jail time traditionally is the teeth that you're talking about when you talk about misdemeanor prosecution versus infractions. So that's, again, at its most basic.
So the idea there being if somebody doesn't have money asking or, you know, requiring them to give money doesn't make much difference, but they do have their freedom. So if you threaten to take that away, that's more of a, a consequence, more of a motivation?
That's the idea. You know, when we infract tickets right now, the likelihood that we will get any money recouped from those infractions is, is close to zero. I don't think we're, we're really recouping money on those right now. So it's, it's, you know, it's toothless.
Gotcha. Forgive me for the, that very basic question, just want to kind of lay out a foundation of what we're talking about here. And looking back at the, the statistics for citations from 2018, I saw 459 citations for EMC 93.02. Does anybody have any idea how many of those are repeat offenders?
You know, I don't, I, I apologize. I did have, I, I, we did go through and get some statistics from previously and we looked into how many of those were prosecuted versus infracted. And it was a high percentage that were prosecuted at that time versus being infracted. But whether or not there were a bunch of repeats, I don't know off the top of my head. It's certainly something that we could get statistics on in the future.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a picture of the efficacy of the old law and if it was causing a, a sort of rinse and repeat for people who would get like picked up, lose all of their things, you know, serve a small amount of time in jail or, or not, and then end up right back where they were. And it was that, what was the effect of that? Because ultimately we changed this for a reason, that it wasn't just the, the, the circuit court ruling. It had to do with the efficacy of the enforcement in the first place.
I'm sorry, I, I may have lost the thread of that question, Councilmember Moulton, but I, you know, there are people in the room who were here during the time when we were prosecuting more regularly. That's, that's not me. In 2018, I was here on a contract basis, but I came sort of right when the rules were really changing. And so you may want to ask that question of, I know Commander LaFrance is, is here and has been involved, perhaps he has some answers to that.
City Attorney Luna Miles, the City Manager Slattery's got his hand up, I think he could answer.
Okay.
So thank you, Councilmember Moulton, and good evening again, Mayor and Council. First off, the, the reason why the ordinance was changed back in 2000, you know, because of the, it was solely because of the Boise case. As far as those infractions that were going back to 2018, I don't know the stats and I know Captain Stevens is there and he could give you maybe some stats of the repeat offenders. But I will say that we did not have any sort of diversion program in place at that time.
Thank you.
That's an important distinction, thank you.
Yeah, and I wanted to let Luke Brownfield, would you like to comment on this item? You're being unmuted now?
Yeah, I was here back when they used to prosecute.
Yeah, I was here back when they used to prosecute camping, and most people, I mean, they would arrest people, they'd be briefly in jail and pretty much released. It was mostly repeat offenders, and then the people that would stay in jail would have other more serious charges. There weren't very many camping charges that actually were prosecuted to conviction. One trial was the only one that ever went. Most of those were just dismissed with stayaways from certain areas wherever they were camping.
Thank you. Thank you.
From a mental health perspective, too, I mean, coming back to the idea of the, the loss of insight, right, that's a huge component of it, because someone who has anosognosia who doesn't recognize they're sick isn't necessarily going to recognize the impacts of an infraction, because they may not have a concept of being able to pay anything. But by having some sort of, having potential causes of having their lifestyle disrupted against their will may provide more motivation and effectively more leverage to be able to support that person and directing them towards treatment.
Yes, being in jail is certainly visceral and difficult to ignore. I have a few more questions, but maybe we can go around the table a bit.
Councilmember Bauer?
I mean, if, if we can ask questions after public comment, I think maybe give them a public, an opportunity to speak, or do we want to, I just think it'd be good to, what do you think?
I think that works. We discussed, I discussed this with the city attorney earlier, we just wanted to give an opportunity for some questions to be asked, and we can carry on after public comment. So at this time, hang on just a minute.
Can I request a brief break?
Yes. So we're going to take a five-minute break. Is that long enough for you? Okay. And we'll be back at 7:10, which is seven minutes, but close enough.
So we will now be opening this item up to public comment, but before we do so, I just want to give a few reminders. So in this meeting, we do practice decorum, and one of those things is that we don't clap whether we like or dislike what somebody says during public comment. We want people to feel safe in sharing whatever they want to share. Everybody gets their three minutes. We don't boo, we don't any of those things. We just give people the container and the space to speak what they need to say. So I really appreciate you guys just moving on with that and honoring that. So then I will read this thing about public comment one more time, and then we will begin. So pursuant to the Brown Act, section five nine, or five four nine five four dot three, "The public shall be provided an opportunity to speak only on items that are listed on the special meeting agenda." So that's the only thing we're talking about this evening. "Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011 dash two-two, City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers." So if you're here for public comment, if you want to line up on the sides of the room, and come on up, Joanne. Thank you.
You, okay, there we go. Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry. I live in Arcata, and I wanted to speak first so I can catch a bus home. And I just stumbled into this meeting after I was at another event here in Eureka. And I think it's pretty amazing what I see Eureka doing, and Arcata can look to Eureka as a good example of proactive involvement in these issues. I did send you an email, Mayor Bergel, a while back on a weekend issue I had when I was in Eureka, and it was a rainy day, and I was concerned about somebody on the street. And it was difficult for me to figure out how to help this person. I do want to say that the law enforcement officers do great jobs, but I really do not want to see an implementation of them being first responders all the time, and that if you can develop something that allows other, actually more specifically trained personnel to help in matters such as the one I encountered, I think that's the method to go and let the law enforcement sometimes do what they do, what they're supposed to be focused on, I think. I do believe that there's a lot of compassionate people in the Eureka Police Department and other law enforcement things. But the final thing I wanted to say is the 24/7 component. The incident that I reported on was a weekend, and things were closed, and it was a long time for a response. And, you know, we need, we need to really consider 24/7 opportunities, even if it's not going to be the exact thing that could happen for somebody calling at 10 o'clock in the morning, as opposed to 10 o'clock at night. But, you know, it has to be kind of this whole, you know, whole day, whole night system, I guess I'm trying to say. And again, one of the things that I find really important is having consolidation of services in a certain area and stuff. Sometimes when you spread things out, it's less desirable. So, you know, the San, if people haven't looked yet at the San Antonio model, I suggest that you take a look at what they've done. And we don't have to, you know, imitate it exactly, but considering those things, 24/7 and consolidated services. And thank you very much, Eureka, for, you know, doing what you're doing.
Thanks for being here, Joanne. And we'll go ahead and start with you, Pam, if you want to come up. And we'll just go back and forth.
Thanks, Doll. Thank you. Okay.
Welcome.
Thanks for this opportunity. Much was said just now about individuals and their problems and solutions to their problems, but I'd like to focus on the environment because that's the greatest entity that is affected by what we're talking about, I think, is homelessness. So my husband and I have been voluntarily removing trash from our natural environment for the past 35 years. We are currently members of Volunteer Trail Stewards and Pack Out Green Team. We are discouraged and disheartened by what we see on a daily basis. Our forests, wetlands, and water fronts are being decimated and polluted by illegal campers. Native trees are denuded for campfires and burned when fires become out of control. Stealing and drug use are rampant, making residents scared to enjoy the outdoors. The volunteers are the underdogs. When illegal campsites are cleaned up, they are re-inhabited within a short period of time. The health and safety of the campers takes priority over the environment that we all depend on. We need a supportive connection with law enforcement officials. We ask that the city prevent camping near wetlands, waterways, and trails that provide habitat and refuge for wildlife and recreation for citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Mr. Shelter, welcome.
Thank you for having me. My name is John Shelter. I run a small little business called New Directions. We just broke 2 million pounds of trash, picked up over 14,000 syringes, and we probably spend more time in the wetlands than everybody except for law enforcement. Pack Out Green Team gives us a run for our money, though. But I'm concerned with the coerced treatment. It's even hard for me to say. What it's going to do, it's going to make your homeless population move a lot faster, and they're going to move a lot more rapidly. Because as soon as one person gets prosecuted, it goes through wildfire, through the homeless community, and everybody knows it. So they'll all be moving. But we don't know where they're going to be moving to. I've seen Housing First models, that we have two big apartment motel complexes that were set up, one at the Red Lion and another one at Days Inn, around by the Arcata House Partnership. And we still have tons of homeless down at the River Bar and stuff. My concern is when we start pushing harder on city properties and stuff, where are these individuals going to end up? Private properties, business owners' properties? Because then they have to share the bill. I'd like to see if you guys go forward with these ordinances, which I've seen over the 25 years of my career. I'd like to see some put in there to protect the private landowners, where these individuals will show up. I would like to see the same things enforced on private property as I do on city property. It would be the fair thing to do, because these private landowners, although we may look at them as being rich, the property may have been handed down to their families. I currently take care of four properties in the city of Eureka that the reason why they called me is because code enforcement was threatening finding them because they couldn't get rid of the homeless or the trash. You guys do a wonderful job. You have a great law enforcement officers. Same thing with Arcata and Fortuna. In our, in Fortuna, I picked up 6,000 pounds of trash today, two syringes. If I pick up 6,000 pounds like I did two weeks ago at Humboldt County Office of Education, I found 100 and something syringes. I'm doing the Arcata Marsh, I find 200, 250 syringes. There's a disconnect, and I don't know where to tell you, except for the cities need to start meeting together. Start working together, creating the same ordinances, the same rules, then we'll quit bouncing people around. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Ms. Irvin, come on up.
Hi, my name is Kim Irvin. I'm a retired physician who's lived and worked in Eureka for 35 years, over 35 years. I'm also a volunteer trail steward, along with many other people who volunteer their time to monitor and maintain Eureka's waterfront trail. The trail stewards meet monthly, so we have been a witness to degradation of the trail system by the homeless campers in Eureka. These trails were created to open up the beauty of our bay, not just for citizens, but also to draw tourists to our region. Humboldt Bay has also, has an incredible variety of birds and aquatic animals. Families have enjoyed the safety of bringing their children onto the trails, helping them learn to ride their bicycles safely away from the streets. It's a great place for parents to introduce their children to wildlife and to spend time in nature. It's also a great place to walk your dog and to walk with friends as well. This has improved the quality of life in our community as something to make us all very proud. Unfortunately, as the homeless population has grown in our area, it's impacted the trail significantly. In parts of the trail that are more wooded or surrounded by larger vegetation, homeless individuals have moved in. The longer they stay in one area, the more damage they do, and accumulated trash can become pretty overwhelming. And of course, there's human waste. This accompanies all the discarded materials they have. I also know, and this was learned here too, that a lot of these things that are in their encampments are stolen from local businesses. As a consequence of the presence of the homeless and the damage that they do, the people who live in Eureka are no longer feeling safe on the trails. It almost seems as if we have given up our trails to the homeless. But this is clearly not fair to the people who live here, who pay taxes and volunteer their time to pick up all this discarded material. This is clearly not fair to what was once a very beautiful city. My husband and I went with our City Council Representative Scott Bauer this last Sunday. We took a tour of the Hickshary portion of the trail with a police officer, with a CSET, Police Officer Chandler Baird, who is part of the Community Safety and Engagement Team. Camping along the trail there is pretty overwhelming, much worse than I suspected. I was impressed by Officer Baird's knowledge of the problem, and also the way he interacted with homeless people. If other council people have not gone on one of these chores with the local police, they should do that, because it's pretty awful what's happened to our trails. Something has to be done to prevent camping along our waterways and trails. It's not fair to the people who live in Eureka, and I've always felt to be very lucky to live in such a beautiful place. What I see now makes me angry and very sad.
Thank you for being here. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Ariel Neal. Both my parents were unhoused when I was born. I personally experienced homelessness in America. My partner and I had jobs lined up when we moved here, and we came here to better ourselves. Obviously, we got more stable. Here in Humboldt County, we even started our own business. I'd like to speak on the programs that helped and the lack of resources in other areas that made it difficult. To start Betty Kwan Chin Open Door Clinic and the Mission Thrift were essential to me and many of my unhoused and low-income peers. Generous food stamps policies, state and locally, kept me and others in our community fed. I'd like to give a huge shout out to Food for People, Big Brothers Big Sisters of America, Lions Club Eureka, even the Shriners, and so many others who provide essential services. When I was stuck car camping, the only places we were legally permitted to park overnight were very far from any publicly available 24-hour bathroom. This meant driving to Wincor Walmart in the dead of the night, often exhausted and sleep deprived, sometimes with an officer telling us we need to move. I'm not surprised at the lack of available space, showers, or restrooms that folks need. Needing to car camp between leases and homes, who are also employed at local businesses, may find it hard making their shift on time or well-groomed. Often, it's nearly impossible. A larger percentage of service workers and, a larger percentage of service workers and employed but low-income people are being forced to car camp due to the housing bubble and high rents. I believe it's important to offer safe parking areas for car campers that include access to toilets and showers, where police presence isn't for dispersal, but for safety of the vulnerable waiting on a more permanent space to live. After witnessing this meeting, I'm really impressed with the progress, and I'm happy to see housing and support programs expanded. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Come on up. Welcome.
I'm Michael Proul with the Humboldt Trails Council. The mission of the Humboldt Trails Council is to serve as a unified voice to support development, maintenance, connection to and use of trails for recreation and transportation throughout the county. Humboldt Trails Council sponsors the Volunteer Trail Stewards Program, which you've already heard about, which provides maintenance on 10 local trails, and during the 2023-24 year, provided 7,208 hours of volunteer labor. So we're contributing a great deal to the, to the maintenance of the trails that the city of Eureka and other government entities are developing. We, we help to keep sections of the trails cleared of trash, graffiti, et cetera, et cetera. Humboldt Trails Council has an MOU, a Memo of Understanding, with the city of Eureka regarding development and maintenance of the trails on, on your lands. The Eureka Waterfront Trail is a public trail. Usually when the trail is built and used by the public, that is enough to discourage people from living near the trail or, or lingering on the trail. And this was the case when the trails were first built. Hiking a few years ago during COVID, and shortly after that, there were few or no encampments. I'm especially focusing on, on the trail segments that I call Wiggy Wetlands and Hickshary, which, which are the very southern ends of the waterfront trail. No camps were, were along the Hickshary when we sponsored a National Trails Day event in June of 2022. Recently, Humboldt Trails Council lost our VTS crew leader for the Wiggy Wetlands section. We, we have since found a replacement person, but there were a great deal of difficulties with the Wiggy Wetlands area. We were having trouble retaining volunteers to show up once a month for the, for the workdays. As I said, we lost our crew leader, and in essence, we suspended our workday. On November 12th, we met with Miles Slattery, Slattery, Slattery and other city staff, as well as representatives from the Audubon Society. And now we've been able to determine how we can reopen the Wiggy Wetlands. But it was a very frustrating situation through this. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work you do. So we're going to come on to this side now. Did you want to come on up? Welcome.
Hi, my name's Devin. I have a question. Will this ordinance apply to only certain areas of the city, or will it be all public property of Eureka?
So we don't answer questions during public comment, but we can certainly get back with you.
All right. I do have a comment. I moved here from Chico last summer, and similar problems arguably less well addressed than the things that I've seen in this, these presentations so far. One thing that I think we did do well in Chico was the creation of places where people were permitted specifically to camp. It seemed to me that it worked a lot better to be able to tell people, hey, you know, you can't camp here, but you can camp in this area. And there were dumpsters and porta-potties and so on, provided. I see that there was the temporary housing, the, oh, mobile home type things on the property out on the waterfront, that that looks great. It would probably be advantageous to have more of those. But in the meantime, areas that are allowed for tent camping with, you know, anemities, like, you know, dumpsters and sanitation and so on, would be great because also it'd be a good place for services and law enforcement and so on to be able to more readily, you know, have access to the people that need it. And that's something that I think that the councils should seriously look into as part of their solution finding, is that there should be some carrot to go along with the stick, so to speak. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Hi, come on up.
Hello, Karen Underwood with the, also with the Humboldt Trails Council, a board member. So I'm speaking on behalf of them, and I'm going to kind of take off where Michael left off. We met with the city in early November about our concerns over Wiggy, and it was a very helpful meeting. City staff, an outcome of that is we'll visit Wiggy a day or two before our group will go to work there, our VTS group, and clean extremen and pick up needles. And Audubon was able to come up with a leader who's going to give it a year to see if the situation improves. Our Humboldt Trails Council Board was very concerned about this issue of safety for both our volunteers and the public who use the trail. So a couple of us decided to do our own survey. On December 30th, a beautiful day after all our rain, we were out on the Hickshary Trail, and we asked three questions of the public. And it was a very short little survey. We probably stopped 10 different groups, only hikers, not bicyclists. The first question we asked him, what kind of experience you've had on this trail? And most of them raved about it. They loved it, and, you know, they loved the surroundings and all of that. And then our second question was, have you had a personal experience on the trail that impacted your sense of safety? And most of them had, and there were many specific incidents, bicyclists, Too Fast, and all of that, but pretty much all of them mentioned the homeless camps. And our third question was, if there was anything possible, what would you do to improve this particular trail? And you can imagine, they said, get rid of the homeless camps. And I had not been on the trail since that National Trail Day a couple of years ago, and I could not believe how many camps were there. There's a little loop trail there. It's got a, McKinleyville is the last name of that little loop trail. I don't think the public is using that anymore, and it's probably one of the more spectacular spots to walk around in all that brush, or the, is, is a lot of campers. We heard people, or we heard one camp cutting wood, chopping wood. So they, people said they felt safe there, walking in groups, would not feel comfortable alone. So a lot of constraint to it. And just a reminder, this trail is part of the Great Reba Trail, part of the Coastal Trail, potentially hundreds of people will be, more people will be visiting this trail in the coming years. So having, having it, having that sense of safety is just paramount to have for these trails. So we want to encourage the city of Eureka to create a process where encampments are not allowed along the trails. And, you know, it sounds like alternative housing.
Thank you, Karen. We appreciate you being here. Come on up, Caroline. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Caroline Griffith. I'm a resident of Eureka. I also have the pleasure of working at a program that is based in Arcata that is a drop-in art space for people who are unhoused. And because there is no day center in Arcata, we've kind of become the de facto day center on days when we're open. I also volunteer with Aha! at the Shower Van, and, and I hang out in Eureka. I hang out in Old Town. I, I have had a lot of opportunities to chat with our unhoused neighbors. And I think it's really important to remember that there's a huge breadth of people. I mean, the, the range of people who are unhoused is the same as the range of people who are housed. We have people who are senior citizens who are unhoused because of healthcare expenses. We have folks who are parents. We have children, veterans, people who have really debilitating mental health issues. We have people who have substance abuse issues, but it's just not one group of people. And so I think it's really important to keep that in mind, as we're talking about anyway, to address the issue. By criminalizing people who are simply existing, we're creating criminals by making this an offense. The photos that the sergeant had are really dramatic, you know, of like camps that have stolen goods in them. I think it's really important to note that not everybody who is unhoused is a thief. Not everybody who is unhoused is a criminal. But when we create a pathway for people to start accruing these, these tickets and start accruing that, we are tacitly creating a criminal class. One thing I've also really been honored to experience with my work with folks who are unhoused is to see how many of them really respond very well to being included. Every single thing that they see every single day lets them know that they are not welcome, whether it is the gates on the doorways that some of them used to sleep in, or the fact that they are not allowed in places with their bags because of the way that they look, the way they smell, maybe they talk to themselves. One thing that breaks my heart every single time it happens, and it happens fairly often, is as people are leaving our space, they say, thank you for letting me be here. Not thank you for, you know, providing me with these cool art supplies. Thank you for the conversation, but thank you for simply letting me exist. And so we need to make sure there are places where people can actually exist before we start excluding them from everywhere. So actually, setting that up, making sure we have those spaces where there is trash, there are bathrooms, there are a lot of folks who really do want to feel included. They want to volunteer. They want to help pick up trash. They want to help re-vegetate spaces. They want to learn. And here we have these really great opportunities. Just because we're allowed to do this now under Martin V. Boise doesn't mean that we should do it. And there was so much great work being done, that Special Project Manager Jeff brought up, that those relationships can be, oh, hell, don't involve law enforcement with everything. We got to build relationships with people.
Thank you. All right. Come on up, Sarah. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My comment time here is mostly for people who are here presently in the so-called audience, or going to view this forever on Humboldt Access. Y'all remember camping? Y'all remember going out to Swimmer's Delight or going somewhere, you pay money, you put up a tent near a river, hopefully, and you go camp? That, that term was changed some time ago to be, you know, in Eureka. Eureka has been on the cutting edge of anti-homless laws, infractions, citations, whatever. And here we are, 2025, the highest law of the land hasn't always been good. African Americans couldn't vote till very recent history. Women couldn't vote. People were enslaved for hundreds of years. So, yeah, just because the city of Eureka has the go-ahead now in a very forward way to continue criminalizing homeless people doesn't mean Eureka should stand out as, as the cutting edge that it has been. I think it's very asleep, steep, rather dangerous slope to categorize houseless folks as just one generalized thing. People don't know how to better themselves. They don't know they have issues, blah, blah, blah. A lot of house folks don't know they have issues. A lot of house folks drink alcohol, smoke cigarettes, smoke marijuana, which according to the federal government is still not legal. So I'm really hoping compassion, 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 whatever Eureka decides to enforce, whatever California decides to enforce, whatever the next guy president again is going to do on the 20th of this month, people got to look at someone else and look in the mirror, too. You can sit in your home, you can drive your car, you can eat your food. It don't make you better. Human dignity is just that. It's just humanity. Everyone deserves somewhere to use the restroom, to have access to clean water, and to have shelter, in the very least. So I'm imploring people, you know, people are stuck in the position they're in. You got a good job, you got a good degree getting you that job, but you know what? It's getting a little late, y'all. It's getting a little late, and people can only be metaphorically cramped on for so long. I hope, I hope compassion wins.
Thank you, Sarah. Come on up. Oh, come on up, Susan. Such a gentleman, Ted. Thank you.
Thank you all. I am a Eureka resident. Been here over Thank you all. I am a Eureka resident, been here over 40 years. Mind-boggling. And I was using the Hickshary Trail for years before it became the Hickshary Trail. The little loop is called the Melkenny Loop, anyway. I also volunteer with the trail stewards and with Audubon. And I agree with a lot of what's already been said. The place is trashed. It's horrible. It's also scary and pathetic. It's also true that the people who are homeless are a broad spectrum of people. Some of the people that are camping out there now on our workdays come out to help us. Others of them shout at us. You know, it's, they're human beings. But while we're working on getting the people help who are the most mentally needy, let's say, we need to get people out of the wetlands, out of our parks, out of our green belts. And I agree with the gentleman who said we need to provide camping places for them. The existing ordinance specifically says that there is no space that we should do this in because it's been tried and failed. Well, maybe we can do it differently. We would need more than one space. There's too many people camping to put everybody in one campsite. I love to camp. I don't go to campgrounds where there are 150 sites if I could help it. And you're going to need supervision. And that's going to cost. The city now is spending over a million dollars a year on homeless services. They should divert some of that to providing a space where people can camp legally without being harassed. They can have bathroom facilities. They can have garbage disposal. People out there have come to us happy to see us because they have garbage and know where to put it because all the dumpsters are locked. Okay? We can meet them halfway. We need to protect our environment, help them. The city's doing a lot, but we need to do more and really, really soon. So I hope some positive changes come out of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Come on up.
My name is Ted Halsted and I purposely was not going to come up here and speak this evening because I know too much. But other than that, someone mentioned camping and I thought, maybe the old Dog Pound area? There's a large area there that doesn't seem like anything's happening. And I'm not sure if that's the city of Eureka, but it's kind of somewhat isolated. It's near Herrick Avenue. And if there's something there that you guys could work an alternative camping space, I don't know, but that's just a suggestion. So that's it. That's all I know.
Thank you. Come on up, Aaron. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, council and mayor. Aaron Ostrom, Pac Out Green Team. I've lived here for about 27 years as well, worked in Eureka for almost as long. I'm here advocating for our local and visiting wildlife and our fragile open spaces, okay? I've recently took a bike ride with my son from the mall all the way to Herrick. And I counted roughly a dozen 40-yard dumpsters worth of trash. If we typically fill a 40-yard dumpster with around 8,000 pounds, so that's around 96,000 pounds of trash, just between the mall and Herrick, and I feel like that's a conservative amount. Okay? I think what EPD is looking for is leverage, you know? They're not looking to arrest a whole bunch of people for misdemeanors. They're looking for leverage to provide our other services. Like the other gentleman said, too, a lot of them don't know they're doing something wrong and can't comprehend that. And maybe this can give them that leverage. I think EPD has done a phenomenal job specifically with their CSAT division in working compassionately, using the community policing method and to help these people. I've done ride-alongs with them. I've seen it firsthand. I've seen it through working with them through our cleanups as well. So I think, and that leverage allows them to get them the help they need to eventually not be out there, you know, ideally. I think Eureka has done a phenomenal job with the Bay Trail. It is a huge gem for this town, for this county. And it's being destroyed right now with the amount of camps out there. So I think giving a little leverage to get them to help they need is going to be hugely beneficial for our community. Let's see. Yeah, and working with the homeless, you know, we engage with the homeless camps a bunch, you know? A lot of them, I feel like, aren't the problem. It's just, it's a fraction of them that are when it comes to these bigger camps like the pictures that we saw. And we've seen plenty of those along the trail. So having that leverage to address the fraction of the homeless community, those bigger camps, is going to be really beneficial for the city of Eureka. Yeah, that's basically what I have. When we worked with the homeless community, too, a lot of them want to clean camp. They just need the resources. We've given them trash bags and other resources. They've helped us picked up or pick up garbage. So I feel like the problem isn't with the majority. It's that small minority, you know, that have mental health problems and they're letting their camps get out of control. So I think having that leverage to work with them, to put them on the right path would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, Nezzy. Welcome.
Thank you. This does feel like a welcoming meeting. It's really nice that all of these things are coming out and being expressed. I think Susan and Caroline and everyone who spoke and has done a really good job of trying to explain the circumstances and the people and the variety of things that we're working with in trying to come up with solutions. There are three things that have been pretty constant. Lead is one of them and it kind of got put on a back burner. Care is another. CSAT is another. And those are the, that's the core of what you're talking about for approaching homelessness and having some leverage with how to work with people. What about adding other components that increase the possibilities that people are not always interacting with the police? They're interacting with other people like in our space. Or in some of, like Leslie, you understand from having Synapses, having an opportunity for people to come and not have that interaction. I firmly believe, as Caroline mentioned, there's not a lot to be gained by increasing the level of crime to be able to work with people. It's going to put them farther away and farther, farther out of the ballpark for a lot of things like housing and other opportunities. It just does that. So be very careful. Think about the possibilities of including people who have programs or who want to create programs. The notion of camping, we've gone around this for a long, long, long time. I had this conversation years ago about creating just a campground for people who come to the county seat when they have no place else to go, when their business of the courthouse is held over. They don't have a place to stay. They don't know anybody here. They can't afford a motel. They can't camp. And they're forced into being illegal by staying here overnight in a vehicle or something. We really could have some great options for our county, as a county seat, and also for the people who are locally disenfranchised because they don't really have any options. We can do this. We can create lots of other opportunities. So I appreciate you all being here and working hard and being just heartfelt and understand how important this is. People outside feel exactly the same way. This is really important. So embrace everybody in a way that can maybe bring other options into the mix, not giving up what you already have. So thank you.
Thanks, Nezzy. Is there anyone else in chambers who wanted to comment on this item this evening? Seeing no one in chambers, I do see Solomon up on Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me there?
We can. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, let's continue the good work. I was very impressed by the presentations about what we have going on in the city. I'm Solomon Verta. I own Eureka Books and I live up above the bookstore, so I'm down in Old Town every day, all the time. And deal with homeless folks at my business and when I go out the back door of where my apartment is, out into the alley. Again, very impressed by the work that is being done in the Homeless Action Plan. It seems great. Even I didn't know about all the things that were going on there, but let's continue that work without criminalizing the existing in public. For, just to be clear, that's the question tonight, is whether Eureka shall criminalize homelessness. That is the sitting or sleeping. Now, we've heard several presenters suggest that such criminalization is necessary to provide staff with the so-called teeth to force homeless people to find help for the services we provide, thus finding a path to end homelessness. But I don't think this is the way that we will end homelessness. It's rather solved by supporting the Homeless Action Plan in other ways, in ways other than criminalizing existing. So continue the good work and expand it, and let's leave behind criminalizing existing in public. Thanks.
Thank you, Solomon. Shannon, do you see anyone else on Zoom?
I see no one else on Zoom with their hand raised.
Great. Okay, so with that, we will bring it back to council for questions and comments. And just a reminder, what we are doing here is providing direction. Let me make sure. Oh, my gosh. So, yeah, we're providing direction. Excuse me. Councilmember Moulton. Hi, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you, everyone, for the insightful comments. I appreciate the compassion in our community for people as well as our beautiful environment. I have a question for, I suppose, for law enforcement. I'm looking at the, looking at the pictures of the encampments there and counting the, I just sort of made a little list of laws that were being broken. Possession of narcotics, sales, littering, parking more than 72 hours in one place, trespassing, improper disposal of human waste. It's already illegal to block a sidewalk, to be in a park between dusk and dawn. I guess my question is, when folks are causing a problem to the level of requiring, you know, that, a next level, wouldn't they already be breaking other laws? Wouldn't there be, the problematic behaviors that we're seeing, wouldn't they be covered by other laws? In some, in most of the examples that I'm seeing, that's what I'm seeing. Here comes the chief.
Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, there are a multitude of laws that are being violated in some of those photos you've seen and a lot of the interactions that we have. A lot of those are misdemeanor, soon to be felony under Prop 36. Some of those are efficient game violations that are already felony violations that we can deal with. I think like Sergeant Nomi explained, without a lot of the avocation that could take place because those are going to the district attorney's office, we can make those arrests. We can file those cases. We can send them up. Then it's in the court's hands at that point. It's in the judge's hands at that point and what the DA wants to do with the case. It takes a lot of our power away to use the lead program. It takes a lot of our power away to work with the public defender because I've met with Luke and others. And there are people who need to have certain amounts of attention to change behavior. There are people that need to have assistance and they can't find that assistance on their own. But we can use the system to our advantage to find that assistance for them. When we send it to the DA's office, when it gets in Superior Court, it's a completely different animal. The city attorney doesn't have the same purview over the case and the investigation or the prosecution of it. And it really takes away what we can do. Then if there is an opportunity for us after someone has been prosecuted, it's like Sergeant Nomi said, we have to really advocate to get charges dropped. We have to do a longer process to try to take advantage of a circumstance that may come up, like they can be rehoused with family members. But if they can't leave the county because they're on probation now because their case got prosecuted, then that's a whole different set of circumstances we have to deal with before we can try to help them out.
Thank you very much for that. I have a question for City Manager Slattery. How close are, this is my last question. Thank you, thank you, chief. How close are we to a day center in Eureka besides Betty's?
So we do have the resource center that Special Projects Manager Davis mentioned. It is now open and that is available for folks. It doesn't have the amenities of the proposed day center with storage and kennels and all of those things. We are expecting the updated plans to be submitted to building sometime this spring. And then, you know, optimistically, construction could begin next year, would be what I'm talking about. I would like to address something and I apologize for doing this, but it's extremely frustrating for me to hear public comment about somehow we're disengaged from this population. Somehow we don't have an understanding of this population. I thought, I am extremely proud to work with the people that I work with, especially those that we're presenting tonight. We are extremely compassionate. I don't think there's a single person that is housed in the Cole County of Humboldt that is more familiar with this population than Larry Alexander and Robert Williams. They are homeless outreach workers. They're with this population on its every single day basis outside of their work as well as inside of their work. We are very familiar with this population and I think that is why we have these programs. We have an understanding of this population and that's the reason why we're proposing this because we're very well-educated in this field and we think we have a very good idea of what's best for all of the different varieties of community members experiencing homelessness. This is just another tool to help address those issues that we're very familiar with.
Thank you, City Manager Slattery. That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Fernandez and then Councilmember Bauer. Go ahead. You already had your hand up.
Thank you. Similar in vein to my colleague, Councilmember Moulton here, I'm very appreciative of people's tone and tenor tonight. Everybody here is very supportive in their tone, in their tone of our community and doing right by our residents regardless of the situation they're in. And I'm very grateful for that. I'm curious, I want to go back a moment. There was, in the presentation, an additional shelter, it seems, that was underway with a community partner and I was unclear on that, how that was being formed? Or can someone educate me a little more on that?
I can speak to that.
Okay.
There's a property that's been purchased by a partnering agency. We had intended on bringing that property to council to consider for purchase, but the timeframe that was necessary to do it was not amenable to the situation. So we worked with them. They currently have that property and we're going to work with them. And in the near future, we will be looking at bringing back to the planning commission and to council the potential purchase of that property and operation of another shelter space that will follow housing first principles and be very low barrier and be at that, and that would be 40 units.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And then while I, while I have you on the line, City Manager, you made a comment about how the law enforcement assisted diversion, the lead, could start up as soon as possible. I think you were being, you know, a bit facetious. Correct me if I'm wrong, when you said it could start up as soon as tomorrow. Is that realistic? Is that true? Would we have the resources for that?
Yes, we do. It's the vehicle to be able to use it. And I think Chief Stevens had spoken about that. Once we do and have violations that don't fall under the jurisdiction of the city attorney to be the prosecuting authority for it, then we don't. But when we have this in place and we can utilize it, it could happen tomorrow. So let's say there is something that falls under her authority and it's not camping, it's something else in the code. And we chose to do that, yes, tomorrow we could literally have that done. I think we need something in place to allow us to have the authority to do so.
Okay. When you say this, you're referring to an ordinance that, I'm sorry, I think it was referred to earlier as an upgrade to a misdemeanor. If it were to be a misdemeanor charge for camping, then a violation of camping. That's, okay. I, I understand where you're coming from with that. And my concern then is that it's from with that, and my concern then is that it's, we're saying we're going to criminalize this particular situation, but we don't have this set yet for lead, for instance.
Okay.
And so walk me through that, please.
Okay. So, first of all, I also take exception to saying it's criminalizing. Let's keep this in context here. Giving a ticket for camping as a misdemeanor is no different than giving somebody a ticket for a drunken public. Their misdemeanors, calling that criminalization, I think, is a little out of context. There's a lot of things that are misdemeanors that I don't think that people violate and are considered criminals. As far as the lead program, you know, we could, if it's pre-booking, and city attorney or Chief Stevens may need to help me with this, but if it's pre-booking, I think we could even do it pre-booking, maybe not because it's not under jurisdiction. What I'm getting at is if, if it wasn't an infraction right now, and it ended up being a misdemeanor, that misdemeanor could be charged to an individual tomorrow, and prior to it, you know, going to court or being prosecuted by the city attorney, they could choose to do a diversion program. That could be one of the milestones in lead. That could be getting help from care, whatever it may be. And then, once they completed whatever they chose to do as a part of that diversion, then it would go back to the city attorney, and she would not file that case, and we would call it good.
All right. I appreciate that.
Am I misunderstanding your question?
No, no, you're not. That's what I was trying to get some clarity on here, is the idea of which, and again, I can understand why this ordinance to increase to a misdemeanor would likely have to come first before these lead or the program, as it were. So, that way you have that response that, if that makes sense. Are we following each other on this? Because I feel like we are, but.
I'm thinking we are.
Okay.
I think that the chief explained it, like, when they do a felony or something like that, it's not under the city attorney's prosecutorial authority. It goes to the DA's office. So, there's not that ability to implement the lead program in that situation.
Okay.
If it's a fishing game violation, if it's, you know, something that's outside of our authority, then we can't do that lead program.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, because I'm familiar in concept with the idea of diversion. And again, having that component there, I think, is very helpful to, you know, again, the population of people that are having to use the wetlands as housing for right now. I do want to take it back because it has been brought up at least a few times in terms of camping, having, you know, the wetlands, trail areas, and I forget there was, it felt like wetlands, waterways, and trails designated as non-camping areas. And I don't know if council has previously taken on the idea, but I know I've talked about it publicly, about having a designated area for camping, particularly for that transition from something, you know, being homeless to something more permanent. And I want to ask how realistic that is, if we're going to be moving towards something where, and I know you disagree with the language, but that's what I'm going to continue using, is criminalizing camping.
Okay. So, we, first of all, that's totally possible. We spent over six months with an advocacy group trying to work on an agreement in order to have that camping area, that legal camping area. We have advertised that through the previous Homeless Action Plan update, that we have relaxed zoning codes, are willing to walk people through the process. What we need is an agency to administer that facility. And we went as far as meeting with a local group for over six months and had established guidelines and parameters. I still have those guidelines and parameters. That would still be made available to folks if they chose to do so, and we could work through that process. The concept of, and what I'm hearing, and I didn't, it wasn't defined very well, but the concept of just saying, hey, here's a property, go have at it and hang out at that place, and that's where you can go, does not work. It's never worked at any other place that I'm aware of in the entire United States or the world. We actually tried it in 2015. We had a rotating legal camp at five or three different properties within the city. It wasn't so much the issues that we had with the community related to that camp. It was actually the issues with the community of the folks that were staying there. It was completely unsafe. The amount of calls for service for very high-level felonies was significant. That's why when we go through that process, and we're more than willing to continue to go through that process as we've done in the past, we need to make sure that there are guidelines in place to not only make it good for our community, but also safe for those people that are going to go to that place.
Okay. I appreciate your responses, and I won't belabor this any longer, but I would like to take that into consideration when we're making, at least when we're deciding our direction later tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I think Chief, I'm sorry to bring you back up again. I have a couple of questions for you. Thanks. And this is, this is related, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, and I hate the term criminalizing because I think of laws as tools, right? How impacted are the Humboldt County courts? Like, would somebody see a day in court for littering, you know, various infractions, even minor misdemeanors?
Most infraction cases in Humboldt County are handled through traffic court. So, likelihood of actually that case going to court for an infraction would probably be very high because it doesn't require a district attorney to be there or a defense attorney to be there. It's between the law enforcement official and the person who received the citation, much like getting a speeding ticket. If it's an infraction, that's how it's handled. As far as the misdemeanors go, you know, I don't go to court anymore. I was up there the other day for the first time in many years. I know from our standpoint of watching my people go to court, it's pretty impactful. It's pretty, we'll leave it as impactful on them because a lot of cases don't go. They are pretty well-scheduled out. But I think what we're looking at is, we don't want to impact that court system, right? So, how do we get away from still having the tools, still doing the enforcement piece that we need to do, but how do we do without impacting the court system? And I think that's what we're talking about tonight with the leads program, being selective on the cases that truly are problematic, that need to go to court, people that need to be addressed through the judicial system versus those that we can defer to our resources that we have to get the assistance they need.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And coming back to whether we go from an infraction to a misdemeanor, would we do that for every single person we contact? Would you expect our officers to issue a misdemeanor?
No, no. This isn't going to be a, you know, the ordinance is passed 30 days later. We're not going to start on the north side of town and go to the south side of town and issue 500 citations. I mean, literally, it's the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law, right? And we can't change the policy and the procedures that we already have in place to deal with the encampments because there are responsibilities that we have to those individuals to make sure they're getting proper notice and opportunities to make changes, opportunities to comply. And if we don't do that, there are ramifications for us as a city, as an agency, and as individuals. So, we won't change the way we handle, the way we address these issues. This does give us the tool, though, if we have those individuals that are completely non-compliant, that we can just simply, at that point, make the arrest, clean the camp, change the behavior, and hope that they take advantage of that opportunity. Now, we're going to offer them to seek out resources. So, yeah, that's kind of the way, you know, it still doesn't change how we look at it. We're going to deal with that 20 to 30 individuals out there that are truly problematic. And, you know, I understand there's different, and I don't think anybody understands probably as much as the CSAT team does and some of our officers who interact every day. But, and this is not mine, I stole this from Chief Jarvis, who stole it from some lieutenant down south, but there are three groups of people that we deal with, and that is the have-nots, and that is our individuals, like we talked about, that something's happened in their life, right? The health insurance increased. They lost their job during COVID. They found themselves now to become homeless. Those are the ones that are seeking out pathway-to-paydays, uplift programs, whatever resources we can give them, they want off the street. So, they're the first ones that are going to be at our door knocking and trying to find help. Then we have our cannots, right? Those are our individuals, those are our community members who are the most vulnerable, who have the mental health issues that are so high they can't function in society, or the addiction issues that just doesn't allow them to function in society. Those, that's where care, that's where CSAT, that's where we're coming in right now and trying to address those on the street level. They're on the street addressing those issues every single day. And then we have our will-nots. The will-not is the criminal element that is going after the most vulnerable people in our community. Just this last couple of weeks ago, we had a major incident happen in front of Freemail, and it had to do with one will-not in that community of cannots and have-nots down there that almost got somebody killed. And those are the individuals we're trying to deal with, those that is absolutely will-not comply, will-not take resources, and want to be problematic not only for the community, not only for the quality of life, for our entire citizens' population of Eureka, but for those that are most vulnerable down there that are victim, being victimized daily by those in their own encampments and those that are homeless with them. So, that's what we want to deal with.
I appreciate that. Do you think, as far as contacts go with the will-nots, let's say, I mean, how many, how much of our resources, our law enforcement resources are consumed by those individuals?
It's quite high. Sergeant Ome talked about picking up 100,000 pounds of trash. There was one camp that was just absolutely enormous behind the Hill Vicar Training Site, and it wasn't just law enforcement down there. It was parks, it was harbor, it was code enforcement. It was a two-day process to clean that one camp up with that many people. And I know the issues on the trail have gone, you know, from good to not so good right now, and there's areas we can't deal with. But we prioritize those issues and what we need to deal with. We have brought on an Old Town officer. We have promoted somebody an Old Town officer as January 6th. So, that's a new position that will help us deal with the issues around the business districts and stuff. And starting Thursday, we just hired our second Parks and Waterfront Ranger, who will be out there helping CSAT deal with some of the issues. We'll be able to have more coverage throughout the entire week. We'll be able to help the trail stewards more and having that coverage and be able to do some of the stuff to help them get out there and clean up the trails. So, we're trying to make the efforts we can in the places we can to provide that assistance. You know, people say you can't arrest your way out of homelessness. Obviously, we can't arrest our way out of homelessness, but there are people in the homeless community that are, need to be arrested, that need to be addressed, and let the system work for us, let the system work for them, or let the system work for the community and change the behavior.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You done? Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you. It's fun I can ask questions and make comments all in one go. First, I just want to speak a little bit maybe to what I'm thinking, but I do have some questions as well. You know, having personally engaged directly with people who are unhoused and found a lot of joy and sorrow and hope and, you know, questions about the world in that engagement, I really appreciate the time that we're spending on this tonight, and I appreciate our staff and the time that they've been spending thinking about this on a daily basis, and many members of the public too, who are here who also are doing that work. And just because I didn't speak tonight, I want to also recognize Freemail and the staff there and St. Vincent de Paul. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Bob, for the work you do every day. I really appreciate you. And, you know, what I'm hearing, and I don't know if it's been completely articu, I think it's been articulated, but I just want to reiterate it, is that we have people in our city who are deeply engaged in this, you know, and we have a council who I think who wants to address this, who, you know, some of us actually ran on platforms that are saying, like, we want to support the city of Eureka in finding better ways to address homelessness. You know, that's for sure not all we ran on, but that's definitely something that was deep in my heart when I ran for council, and that we're struggling to find solutions, and that, you know, things haven't, I mean, I see it, you know, there's people who, there's things that haven't gotten better despite the amount of resources, which is pretty extensive that we've put into it, you know, and I hear the folks in the Trails Council saying, hey, it's getting worse. It's getting worse again, and, you know, and I recognize that, you know, that we have a beautiful wetland right there on the waterfront, you know, and I'm hearing city staff say, we want to try something, a new tool, you know, or a tool we sort of tried before that we weren't able to fully implement in order to see if there are opportunities to meet people's needs in a more direct way within the city without taking it to the county because the city has potentially a different kind of perspective, a different kind of resource that we might be able to try. I understand, you know, the words around criminalization, you know, it for sure is talking about using law enforcement, you know, is one of the relationships in that strategy, not the only relationship, you know. And I do think we still, you know, as folks know, we're working on crisis response, and there's still some things I think to iron out with dispatch and things like that, that hopefully, you know, are still in process, you know. And I, knowing city staff and having had the opportunity to work with them, you know, on this for six years now, I do trust that, you know, our city attorney, you know, many conversations I've had with her, that she wants to change people's lives, not criminalize people's lives, you know, and change people's lives for the better, whatever. I understand better is, you know, a subjective term, for sure. And I just want to say, you know, some of this too, you know, there's people I hold in my heart, like a woman who, she's now in Arcata, but I consider her a friend of mine who experiences very extreme mental health challenges and is on the streets and suffering, you know, and I'm probably going to cry, you know, and I think about her in terms of, like, what are the tools that are going to get her off the street, you know, because I've certainly tried. I know other people have, you know, and so, I am, you know, for sure, like, you know, I think the one thing I'll just say that I wrestle with is, right, like, I trust humans. I have questions around systems that dehumanize situations, you know, and so, one of the things I wrestle with is in terms of implementing a strategy where I'm like, okay, like, the, you know, the people who are on our staff are in this room. I'm like, okay, like, let's, like, let's work together to do this, you know, and also as we do this, like, what's a system that exists outside of the people who I know and have trusted relationships with, you know, and so that's where I think that, like, thinking about like a trial period or things like that, or things where there's like, I don't know, checks and balances, right, you know, a public process around it. That's what we're here for, you know, it is valuable. And sorry, I'm taking up all the airtime, but, you know, that's why we run for office, right? You know, I do look forward to, you know, a future day use center. I think that is a missing ingredient, you know, and I know that St. Vincent de Paul is doing their best to fill some of that gap right now, and for sure, like, thanks to the art program that's happening there, and, you know, and thanks to, you know, Hannah's work down there too, and, you know, and I'm excited about the Crowley property. I do wonder, and this is a question, if, you know, and just to say, I've worked with community organizations, I don't think that, I don't think we're done yet in figuring out the safe camping, you know, I think that we should have a working group on that, everyone's favorite thing, but I do think we should have a working group on it, you know, to, and I do think, like, smaller satellite type of implementations would be best rather than a big thing so that there can be more personal relationships and kind of strategies around, like, putting people together who want to be together, you know, and have community with one another. But the question I have is, with the Crowley property, you know, there's bathrooms and kitchens there. If there could be at least like a, maybe a small, like, safe parking attempt with that site, if there's anything that would limit that? I mean, again, I think we'd want to, like, do it at a very small scale if we were going to do it, or maybe like, get the first 40 people there and then be like, okay, let's try, you know, five safe parking things or something like that. So, that's a question if that's possible. And then I think a question of, like, a working group around, if there's interest in a working group around safe camping. And just to say, my general tenor is to try this with the lead. And I guess I have a question around possibilities for homeless court related as part of that strategy or in the lead strategy too. And there was someone in public comment who asked if the ordinance would apply to only certain areas or only public property or public property or also private property. And I believe Chief Stevens or City Attorney Lenu has some input on some of the work around private property is how people engage with the city around that. Anyway, that's, okay, I'll stop talking now. Thanks.
So, to answer that question, Councilmember Castellano, I do think that Chief Stevens could obviously offer some firsthand anecdotes about private private property, but I do want to say that, um, the, the existing ordinance has a specific section about, uh, camping on private property. So, um, we have had that in the ordinance for a long time. It is still a crime to have camping on, uh, private property that violates our code. Uh, and again, that's been in place for many, many years and it would likely continue to be in place, um, moving forward. So the answer in, in simple terms to the question, would it also apply to private property? Is yes, it would, and it has. And this may be a, a little semantic, but I think it needs to be said. Um, violation of the ordinance is a crime now. Uh, we're just talking about what level of enforcement, what level of penalty, right? Right now, the penalty is just a fine, uh, under an infraction. So we're talking about the level of penalty, not whether it's a crime or not a crime. Chief?
Actually, City Manager Slattery, you had your hand up.
No, I'm sorry, the chief can go. I can answer the other questions that Councilmember Castellano did want.
Okay. So Chief, you want to come on up? Thank you.
I believe what you asked was about private property. The issues we run with, uh, into with private property is often we'll work with the property owners and owns, let's say a green belt, for instance. Uh, we will help them make it safe, clean it out. But it's not honestly, without their permission to go on to there, it's not our jurisdiction to go on and deal with those issues. So with the help of code enforcement, the city attorney's office, we look at ways that we can work with the property owner to make the property secure, so we can eliminate the need to go back, because, uh, it does become quite expensive for the property owner when they have to do the cleanups and either hire a private company to come in and do it, or do it themselves, haul that stuff away. Uh, but we do provide that assistance to at least make it safe for them to do that. And a lot of times we'll go above and beyond that. But, um, it, it is problematic. It's, we don't have that jurisdiction over their private property per se to voluntarily go in and just deal with the issue on a daily basis.
Thank you. City Manager Slattery, did you want to address those other questions or did you want to wait?
Yeah, as it relates to the Crowley property and a potential for, um, safe parking, um, it would, I don't mean to joke about it, but if they were all smart cars, maybe? There's a, a serious, uh, space restriction there. Um, there's not much space after those are up. So I think from just a, a space issue, that wouldn't be feasible. The, what was the other questions? There was two other.
Let's see, uh, working group on safe camping area.
I, staff would participate just like we did last time. Councilmember Castellano would be more than willing to, to do so. I would involve, um, myself, Director Kenyon, and likely Chief Stevens. But yes.
And then, uh, homeless court. That was my other question.
I think that, uh, managing mental health condition, Rosen. I will like to say one thing about the, the private property. I don't know if, I think one of the public commentators were referring to cleaning up private property. Um, we have issues that, not only from a liability perspective, but from an equity perspective of, you know, cleaning up private property for private property owners. And there would be liability issues with that as well.
As far as homeless court, I, I do want to hear obviously what Managing Mental Health, uh, Clinician Rosen has to say about it as well. But we did have a homeless court here, um, several years ago. This predated my time in the city attorney's office. I have looked at the, the entry points for that homeless court. And my sense of that is that it was very, um, high barrier at that time. Um, you know, different time, different council, but I think we could revisit, uh, homeless court option and, uh, definitely change the rules about entry to homeless court going forward. So that's something I'm very interested in looking into.
And to, uh, build on to that, the, the, uh, one of the real perks of lead and, and having a pre-booking diversion program is that flexibility and that low barrier access. Um, the, the concern with adding more layers onto that would be staff time, more hoops to jump through that may be difficult for, um, the individual who's being referred. Um, and so I mean, those, those would all have to be considerations. Um, I'd be excited to collaborate in, in looking into a homeless court model, um, that's low barrier and that could fit into that. Um, but the, with, with lead in particular, especially the, the model that's been looked at in Seattle and LA and San Francisco, um, the, the real gem of those models is that it happens at that point of contact with law enforcement. And so there isn't a, a wait time or a delay to be referred to services. It's, it's at the same time that that accountability component is occurring.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Bauer.
I, I first just want to say, Councilmember Castellano, I, I appreciate your passion for this issue. And no, I'm serious. Um, I think we're a very compassionate community. It's pretty obvious by what we do as a, as a, as a city and the people that show up and, and treat each other respectfully, you know, even if we may differ on how we think we should deal with this issue. So I, I just want to say that, um, I support what we're talking about here, the, the lead and, um, uh, changing it to a misdemeanor. Um, I think, you know, I, I found the opportunity to, to, to be out and, um, uh, you know, engage with the homeless. And there are some folks, like, stealing from the Special Olympics. Like, are you kidding me? It, it, there's nothing that makes me angrier than something like that, you know? Stealing from our local businesses. There are people that don't fit into what we think of as, you know, as homeless. It's something else. And there's a criminal element. They're out there. I've unfortunately had to engage in a lot of that, you know, through work. And, um, we have to deal with that. And, um, we have to deal with, you know, in, in essence, it's a little bit of tough love, unfortunately. Like, there has to be another tool. And our law enforcement are not going to use it, you know, like a hammer. You know, it's going to be used delicately. I, I truly believe that, that it'll be used when we need, need to be used to get people help. Some people just, you know, don't want it. And I'll say that, you know, having a, a family member who doesn't recognize that they're mentally ill, who I haven't talked to in five years, um, I understand it 100%. And some people need, you know, um, care court. Some people need, um, a law that'll help get them into treatment, get them out of that rut, get them out of, you know, so many things that, um, ill our community, make people feel unsafe. Um, it's such a challenging issue, but I think we have to try something different. And I will say that this community has done more. I feel like, you know, we always want to do more, right? Like, what, what are we doing? What can we do? What can we do differently? How much more can we do? We've done more than any community in Humboldt County. We have over 200 beds. Fortuna has zero. Arcata has 18. Um, you know, McKinleyville has zero. So we have done more than anybody. And I'm proud of our staff and I'm proud of our community for doing that. We are light years ahead in Humboldt County. So let's just remember that. We're doing all we can. Um, I will say that, you know, as far as, uh, camping goes, I think I, I support. Let's, let's, let's get an ad hoc committee, but it has to be with everybody else in, in Humboldt County. We need the county involved in that. We need the other communities involved in that. Eureka cannot be carrying, you know, the, the, we don't have the resources to do it. We need it to be a community-wide effort. So I, I will, I'm happy to join that committee any day. Um, but it has to be beyond Eureka. It can't just be us every time. And I, I feel like, you know, people come from other communities to, to our meetings to tell us, you know, hey, great job. You can do more. But it's, what are other communities doing? I don't, I'm not being hurtful to our, our fellow council members, but I want them to understand, it takes a village and we have to all do more because we're doing a lot here. And I appreciate our staff for doing that. Um, I appreciate what, what we do as a group. I, I love working with you all. Um, but I do think it's important that we, we, we change our ordinance, um, to provide another tool. It, you know, we'll be monitoring it, you know, in case people think it's being abused. But we've got to have it. And, um, I think we also should think about a pallet ordinance, if you want to believe that, because there's hundreds of them out in the wetlands. And people need to control their pallets so they don't end up where the volunteers have to break their backs taking them out of, out of the mud. But maybe that's all I have to say right now, but, um, thank you.
Do we have any further comments? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you very much. Uh, I just wanted to comment, um, Chief Stevens, what you said, uh, about the, what you stole, uh, about the have nots, the can nots and the will nots, really, uh, brought something up for me, uh, that struck a chord. Uh, reminded me of when I was doing homeless outreach. And, you know, I spent a lot of time at Free Meal and crawling under bridges looking for people. And I would meet folks in the gulch and, um, back in the Devil's Playground. And how many times I talked to somebody who had absolutely nothing, who had had everything stolen from them by someone else there? And how many folks in this vulnerable population are being victimized by other people who are just camping there as well, because they know they can't fight back? And that really turned, um, just brought this to... It makes me think of this more as a way, um, in addition to getting people into treatment, in addition to getting help, more as also a way to protect folks who can't protect themselves because they don't have the resources of somebody who can, who has a home or who has access to resources. Um, thank you for mentioning that. I'm, I'm... Yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Do you have a final comment? You gave yours? Okay. So, um, do you feel like you have the direction you need? Because I do have a final comment, but... Do you feel like you have the direction you need?
I, I do. Um, I mean, obviously this is just a study session. We appreciate all the feedback from the community as well as from council. Um, uh, the next step would be to come back with a draft. Um, it wouldn't, you know, it would be similar to every other ordinance. It'd be introduced at that meeting. There would be opportunity for discussion and changes. Um, discussions and changes are significant. It would come back again for another introduction. Um, if not, then it would come back again to another, um, council meeting for adoption.
Is what, uh, City Manager Slattery just laid out the direction of the council. Be nice to get, uh, be nice to get some thumbs up from you guys.
Thumbs up, and I have a final comment.
That's two.
How many, how many thumbs do we have? One, two, three?
How many thumbs?
Three.
Thank you. Consensus is necessary here. I appreciate you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, um, as we close this out, I just want to share my appreciation for our community that always steps up. Am I not in the mic?
No, no, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, did you want to say something? No, go ahead. Councilmember Castellano.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Awkward.
Not really.
The, the, I don't think I caught it, City Manager Slattery, but, uh, something, you know, an ordinance that also kind of lays out, uh, checks and balances and process around its implementation and, uh, review, I guess. I feel like I heard that.
Yeah, I mean, um, I know that City Attorney Luna agrees with this. Um, we could, we'll have the discussion about the ordinance itself. The ordinance itself should be, what we're trying to do is to make it more understandable and enforceable and more straightforward. If there's policies or other things that want to come about from the staff by council, but I don't believe policy-related stuff, um, should be in, in the ordinance. And City Attorney Luna may...
We've, we've lost, uh, City Manager Slattery, but yeah, his point is an important one. With your direction, I will work with all of the, uh, departments to draft an update to these ordinances to bring back, uh, with everything in mind that we've talked about today. There are going to be some limits on, uh, what we can put into a ordinance that we're trying to make enforceable through the court system. So, um, as far as checks and balances go, you know, we can have preambles that talk about our goals with this ordinance. But when it comes to breaking a law or not breaking a law, you know, we do have to be careful that it's very clear and enforceable. That's what we're trying to do here, is add that piece. Um, and when it comes to adding policies, you know, you heard today from, uh, Special Project Manager Davis about the Homeless Action Plan. And, you know, there are places for that kind of policy work, uh, that may not be the ordinance. But we certainly hear you all loud and clear when it comes to intent and enforcement. You good? Sure?
On that note, I just have a few closing comments about this. I really, again, I appreciate our community for coming out tonight and remaining compassionate and kind to each other, because this is a very difficult topic to talk about. Um, and so I really appreciate that. And I also want to just share that even though I don't have a vote, I also support this. I too have, as with many of my colleagues and many of you in the audience, have spent a lot of time out in the field, out with folks. And the reason that I strongly support this, strongly support this, is because over and over and over again, I have seen and experienced three to five people, I can give you their names after the meeting if you want to talk to me, if you don't believe me, but that predate on people in camps, that predate on people at Free Meal, that predate on people sitting on the corner, that are predatory. And it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. And so this is just one more tool that we have to move forward with. I don't think that this is a tool to go and beat people over the head with. I don't think that we're, you know, trying to hurt people. I think this is an opportunity to build a stronger, um, uh, stronger place for our, for our people to be. And I want to share with you, I mean, and if you think that we're trying to do all these horrible things and criminalize and beat people down, I would, um, direct you to look at the work that's happening in our city over the last 10, eight, 10 years. And look at the direction we're going. We're a city that has our own social services program. We may be unique to California. I'm not sure. But certainly in Humboldt County, we are the only city with our own social services department. Where we are on the cutting edge with our police programs that go out and do trainings, CTI or CIT trainings and learn how to work with people and to work with people and treat them with humanity and with kindness and with respect. There's a lot of things that have changed, and I'm not saying we're perfect. I, I know that, I'm hearing that from the audience. I, I'm not saying we're perfect. I'm saying we're moving in a good direction. And we've got a lot of people moving the oars in that positive direction. And any tool that we can use to benefit our community, especially these people that are being predated, I, I hate that word, that there's being predatory things happening to them. Or when I'm out, you know, I was at Walgreens one day and several of my friends were out front with backpacks and new jackets and the whole thing, you know? Just walked right out. I said, oh, is that a new jacket? Yeah, that's my new jacket, you know? And that affects and impacts all of us. Is that all homeless people? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. But there is a degree, and I think when it was mentioned, you know, the will nots, um, and there's a group of them here. And so this is just one more tool to get there. Again, um, just big appreciation for all of you. Just know that we're really willing to talk about this and keep an open, open dialogue. Thank you to staff for great presentation. And with that, we are adjourned.